Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:30. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, August 3, 2021 to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance, flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains, one nation of our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Here.
Mr. Provenzano?
Here.
Mr. Shudo?
Here.
Mr. Spataforo?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
And Mr. Bentley, I am present. All right. Next item on our list is approval of previous meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Chair, if there's no discussion, I move to approve minutes. Meeting by, or approval by Mr. Provenzano.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Opposed? Sorry. Okay. Approval of tonight's agenda.
We do have one item, Mr. Chairman. Item 6A, the petitioner has asked to withdraw that request.
Okay. All right. All right. With that change?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I move to approve the amended agenda.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield, supported by Mr. Provenzano. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Approval of tonight's... Okay, got it. All right. The first item on our list is now B, conditional rezoning residential, one-family urban R1 to residential multifamily low-density R2L. Permanent parcel 0805301008, located on the east side of Romeo Plank Road, north side of 25 Mile Road, Section 5, Section 05, Section 5 LLC petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I touch on that, I just wanted to go over again with the commission and the residents here with regards to what conditional zoning is. So this was a change in our ordinance to allow conditional zoning that was approved last fall, late summer, early fall. And these are the first time, there's two items tonight and one on the next agenda in two weeks, are the first ones coming through this process within the township. So essentially, it's the owner or representative for the owner. They can voluntarily offer some use and conditions with regards to the zoning of the land. They, if approved, get an 18-month timeframe that the conditions would apply and things, you know, construction would begin. They can seek extensions should they not get started within 18 months. The township itself shall not add or alter any of the voluntary conditions. All the conditions need to come from the applicant or the owner's representative. And the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the township board who makes the final approval or denial. So for the first item, conditional zoning, as you mentioned, this is for a parcel currently zoned R1, and they are seeking to do a conditional rezoning to change that to R2L. The property is located on the east side of Romeo Plank, north of 25 Mile Road. Current zoning does not allow for duplex on R1 zoning or within R1 zoning, and that's what the applicant is seeking to do here. So that's why they have chosen R2L. Existing zoning R1 allows three units per acre. The site is roughly 44 acres, so I guess if you did the math there, it's roughly 132 single-family units. The applicant intends on developing the site as 116 duplex residential units. So as you saw in your packets, they have offered up a number of conditions with regards to this conditional zoning, that the property shall be used for residential duplexes as set forth in the plans. And I think you saw that in your packet. They do have a concept plan in there that I'll bring up here in a second. There will be no connection to the roundabout at 25 Mile. Again, a total of 116 units, which is less than the three units per acre, which is currently allowed. They are providing a 20-foot-wide landscape easement along Romeo Plank Road and 25 Mile Road frontages. The developer will be donating the 25 Mile right-of-way and Romeo Plank Road right-of-way to the County Department of Roads. The building setback will be increased from the center line of Romeo Plank Road and 25 Mile Road, as shown, I apologize, I shouldn't say approved, as a concept plan, and all legal assessors' requirements for tax parcels combination shall be followed, as well as development will meet ordinance standards, and they will still have to come back with a site plan. Nothing about this conditional zoning would approve a site whatsoever. They still have to go through the normal site plan process. Again, here's an example, concept plan. You know, this is nothing that's approved with the conditional zoning. It's just to give you an idea of what they're looking to do with duplex units, one entrance on 25 Mile, one entrance on Romeo Plank, showing some green space buffer on both of those roadways, as well as no connection to the roundabout on 25 Mile. Staff has no objections at this point with this conditional zoning request, and I know the applicant is here and has a presentation as well.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hand out to the commissioner. I need you to state your name and address for first for me, for the record, please.
Lyle Nguyen of Lombardo Homes, at 13,001 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Mind this area.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I'd like to thank everyone for meeting tonight. It's actually nice to get back in person once again to have a face-to-face meeting. It's a, I think it's much improved over virtual meetings. They can have a little more interaction with each other. Like I said, my name is Lyle Nguyen, and we are talking about a conditional zoning request for a project we have identified as Wolverine Villas. Just briefly, we're going to talk, you know, put in more introduction tonight, and then we'll talk about the property data in more detail, our rezoning request, and the community we're proposing, as what was shown on the schematic site plan there. With me tonight is Joe Cle. He is our Director of Land Development. Once again, I'm Lyle Nguyen, and I'm the Development Compliance Manager with Lombardo Homes. And we do have a project manager that is not with us tonight, but he will be following through with the project, as Jim Green. And I believe, you know, your planner has identified many of the topics already. Just briefly, the site is just a little under 44 acres in size in terms of gross acreage. It is actually the, probably the last remaining parcel of land that was originally the Wolverine Golf Course. This corner of that property originally had the clubhouse, the banquet facility, the parking lots, the driving range. Those amenities were really focused at this corner. You can see from the photograph, there's actually some, a lot of the parking lot is still there, which would ultimately be removed. A lot of that site, you know, be cleaned up, and obviously with the development vastly improved the way it sits right now. Along the north and east side of the property, the middle branch of Clinton River runs through the property. There's the long blue line. It kind of creates the property in a triangular shape. There are seven acres of floodway on this property, as well as 13 acres of floodplain beyond that floodway. So that equates to approximately 45% of the property being usable from the standpoint of floodplain and floodway. And plus, the triangular shape makes it quite a unique little piece of property to try to get development to occur on this site. The current zoning, it was stated as R1, you know, single-family. The zoning district intended to plan both envisioned three units per acre on this site. Our request tonight is actually for multifamily, low-density R2L, but as a conditional rezoning request. We know there is concern about increasing density, so that is one of the major conditions we're offering, is to keep that density less than what would be allowed on the property today. As Josh mentioned, that's 116 units. Three per acre would actually allow up to 132 under the current zoning. So that, yeah, that floodplain does represent 45% of that property. It does make it difficult to put a single-family subdivision based on the floodplain and floodway, as well as the configuration kind of being triangular in shape and kind of almost dissected by the floodplain through there. The current zoning does not support, the ordinance does not support duplex on the site, but the R2L zoning does. And that's key in our effort as a conditional rezoning, is to keep that density downwards master planned by limiting the number of units to 116 units on the site. The other conditions, there's obviously no road connection to the roundabout, and although it's not listed here, there is no road connection across the river to the single-family portion of the Wolverine development. It would be just too costly to build a bridge across the middle branch of Clinton River, plus we're mixing private roads and public roads. It would be kind of a nightmare to try to make that happen. The, we will be granting those right-of-ways. As a matter of fact, we actually did grant right-of-way under the original, the first roundabout construction. That was already granted to allow that to happen. We will be increasing the building setbacks. There will be a little more parallel with single-family homes that would back up to the Romeo Plank or 25 Mile Road, as well as a 20-foot-wide landscape buffer that follows the ordinance for a single-family subdivision. So you actually, we're actually going to add that into the project. It's not required under R2L, but we want to make that a condition, so it kind of follows the subdivisions as you flow north on Romeo Plank. Those subdivisions have those setbacks and those landscape easements, so it kind of ties in with all of that. And then obviously, once we come back with a site plan for approval, we will follow the approved plan as we move forward with the project. And lastly, some of the items we talked about, you know, during rezonings are, there are considerations for traffic. As you see from this photo, this is the roundabout that the road division has constructed. That was done in 2016. That has already made improvements to traffic flow through that intersection. Today, you cannot get through the other intersection. It is closed for construction. They are building a similar roundabout. That should help alleviate a lot of the traffic backup on the four-way stop that was occurring at that location. So the, that was really the big, big issue, I think, is the traffic considerations. Those intersections, you know, a few years ago, just did not function well until these road improvements are made. County has the funding, they're making those improvements, and that should negate itself real fast. The density, our units are smaller. There's no basements. It's typically a two-to-a-three bedroom if you have, you know, put a bedroom on a loft. There are smaller homes than traditional. Traditional homes are going to be closer to a three-to-a-four-bedroom scenario with basement. Generally contributes more traffic from a single-family home than a duplex unit. Once again, the density comparison here, the R1 is three units per acre. That would allow 132 units. If you did a traditional R2L zoning without conditions, calculation would yield about 204 units on that property. And we didn't want to go to that level. We want to make sure we stay within your master plan. That's why we're coming to you with showing, it was part of our condition, 116 units. That's 2.6 units per acre. And once again, the road connections would not be made. The community itself, the 116 units and 58 buildings, the general layout we have here kind of shows really kind of two, I'll call it landscape courtyards between the buildings, almost backing up to each other, bigger green space between buildings is what we have pulled together so far. These are two- and three-bedroom units. The unit size is arranged from about 1,500 to 2,600 square feet, depending on using loft spaces. Pricing is starting between $350,000 to $400,000 per unit. There are four bridges that cross the river right now. All of them were put in originally, I believe, with the golf course, the car path bridges. Three of those will be removed as part of this project. The one that does remain is down by 25 Mile Road. There's a sidewalk coming from the east that's already connected to that bridge, and that's where we will also be continuing that sidewalk and continuing that path system. We also know that the public sewer and water in this area exist and has adequate capacity for what we're proposing. And then the landscape, landscape efforts with additional setback helps us exceed the minimum requirements in the R2L zoning district, trying to match closer to a single-family with the landscape effort. And we know that the stormwater, obviously with the middle branch of Clinton River there, we have a large pond. All our stormwater will be directed through that pond to help cleanse it before it gets discharged into the river itself. With that, just a couple samples of the building styles and elevations and color renderings. These are, like I said, two- and three-bedroom units. With that, I can open up to questions from yourself, or, you know, we can proceed into the public hearing component.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Commissioners, any questions?
Or a petitioner?
Mr. Oliver?
Are any of these units proposed to be rental units, or are they all strictly for sale?
They are for sale product only.
So you're not going to hold them and lease them?
We are not. That is correct.
Okay. And then you talk about your excess landscaping. You're going to exceed the, kind of described that a little bit.
So the, the R2L district allows buildings to be placed, I think, setback, I think it's 90 feet from the right-of-way of Romeo Plank or 25 Mile Road. It does not require the, a dedicated landscape easement, whereas a traditional subdivision or site condo has the requirement of a 20-foot-wide dedicated landscape easement. And we're proposing to include that in our project. It's one of the conditions we're offering. That area through there, through that easement area, will be landscaped. There will be a landscape plan you'll see as part of the site plan's middle process, and three signs and landscape.
One last question. You're going to take out some of the bridges, but you're going to, you're going to leave one bridge so it does not interrupt the sidewalk? I didn't understand where you're at with that.
Correct. There are, there are four bridges currently that exist over the middle branch of Clinton River, and pedestrian-style bridges. They're, like I said, the old car path bridges. The one closest to 25 Mile Road already has a sidewalk coming out of the Wolverine subdivision. That bridge will stay and remain in place, and we will connect to that with our sidewalks. There will be continuation of the sidewalks. The other three throughout the property along the length of the river are the bridges we will be removing. They only lead into their retention pond, larger lands, I mean, wetland area that was constructed as part of that on the other side of the river was constructed. So those are the three additional bridges we'll be taking out.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else?
I just have one question. The samples that you're showing of the houses or condominiums, would they be four-side brick?
I believe they're four, you know, full brick on the front, except with the exception of some, you know, treatment with lapboard or, there'll be similar treatments around the sides as well, probably minimum to the brick, brick belt, you know, belt line with some alternating treatments.
And they'd be set up for two cars in a garage and two cars in a driveway with additional visitor parking?
Two cars, yeah, two in the garage, two in the driveway, and then some additional visitor parking scattered throughout the site.
And you would put the sidewalks in on Romeo Plank and 25?
We are.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions. You're, you had indicated that with an R1 zoning, you could, you could put in 132 units. Is that, is that consider all the floodplain area as well? Or is that as if it was just buildable, all buildable area for that acreage?
Right. I did state the 132. The zoning ordinance calculates the density based on the gross acreage of the site.
Right.
So it's purely just that gross acreage calculation that would yield 132 units.
Correct. And that's what I was suspecting. So really, to compare the 116 versus the 132, it would probably not be possible to put in 132, would you say?
It would be hard because of the floodways that are along the Clinton River. Floodplain we can alter, modify, cut, fill. So yes, you are correct in that statement.
Based upon the plan that you show in your handout, as well as what you've shown on the screen, it appears there is a line delineating the floodplain, and that, and that the homes that you're building on will encroach upon that area. So you're filling a floodplain.
Correct.
Could you elaborate on how you're going to handle that? And I know it has to go through all the approvals with Eagle and everyone else, so.
So essentially, we are using the area we create for the pond. We're excavating materials out of there. That creates what's called a compensating cut to offset the amount of area you'd be filling. So yes, we would be filling, would be taking whatever topsoil that may be left on the golf course, removing that material, placing down compactable material, having that tested as we do, you know, do that work, so we know we have strong enough and compact enough soils to support the foundations of the homes. That calculation, how much floodplain we fill, how much we create by the pond excavation is the balancing act that we have to accomplish and apply for permits based on.
And, and does that plan that you've shown, although it's a concept plan, it's not a final site plan, we're not approving a site plan tonight?
Correct.
So that may change. But what you're showing, based upon the balancing of the site per se, so that you have an equal amount of floodplain area below that elevation as it's designated, is compensated by that. Is it a detention plan or a pond, or is it a retention pond?
I apologize. I always get the two mixed up, but we are creating that pond there. Yes, and to answer your question, we have done preliminary numbers on the cutting and filling that would occur, and are comfortable with being able to accomplish that with what we are currently planning on the schematic plan.
Is there any percentage or degree that you think you could increase that, that amount of floodplain volume to relieve some of the issues that, that we have along that river?
So a couple of things will occur on this site. The removal of those excess bridges will help with the flow of the water through there, eliminate the obstructions in the river, along the edge of the river. So that will help the flow, not restrict it and cause, you know, backup. Can we get more flood? We always try to get more floodplain than I, we have to get more floodplain cut than we do in terms of fill. Is it, yes, there is room to make some adjustments, and actually coordinating with our project on the other side of the river, the balance of the subdivision. I think this commission reviewed it in early last year, I believe. With the remainder of the subdivision comes out to Romeo Plank, we have a large pond on that side. But we don't have as large of a need for fill of floodplain on that side. So that compensation does come into play. Our plan is to submit those projects jointly, so those floodplain cuts and fills are adequately accounted for.
Okay. And I suspect that that hasn't been taken forward to the environmental reviews.
You're, you're correct in that statement. We are under design on the single-family side right now, so we have a better handle on that. Anticipating about two to three months, we'll be starting that permit process.
Okay. And then related to the elevations that you're, you're showing, they're totally different than what we, we have in our, or what we received in our packet. And so...
Yes, we updated, to be, the one on the left.
Here to be the, pardon?
We updated the one on the left, I believe.
Well, the one on the left is a little closer. This one on the right, well, if I turn this way, on the right, is, is significantly different than any of the elevations that we've received. And the elevations do indicate that they were brick on the gable ends, except for the larger areas, which you have siding, as I understand it. So, all right. No changes to the plan?
No. And then these, these will be submitted as part of the site plan process as well.
Okay. So these are still concept plans as well?
They are. And that's early, you probably got the early version when we were working through some of the supplemental packages, and they are evolving, yes.
Okay. All right. Is it, is it appropriate to talk about the, the contract?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. If I can get to it here. I just had a few questions on that, and that would be general to the contract, since this is the first time we're kind of reviewing that. And we had a couple of them here, so I just wanted to make sure we're, I'm understanding what's happening. So under, there's two, two times it states this basically. Excuse me, let me find it here. If there's someone else that has a question, I'll, I'll find it here first.
All right. We'll come back to Mr. Bentley. Is there anyone else that has anything they'd like to ask our petitioner?
I got a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
Will this be built in one phase, two phase?
It's potential to be built in two phases. There's a logical breakpoint there between the two entrances. We are, we'll have a phasing line as part of a site plan process. We'll be able to finalize it for that.
So if you build it to the north, you could use Romeo Plank as your entrance?
Yes.
If you build it below, you could use 25, I'm assuming?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. But you, you don't know for sure.
No. We, but our site plan, when we do submit that, we'll have a phasing plan on it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. You find it, Mr. Bentley?
Yes, sir. Thank you for, for being patient with me. It's in, it's in the draft that I have anyway, under I3. It is called rezoning approval. And I just want to understand the, I believe it's, well.
What page you on?
It is on page three of the draft. And it says, "Except as set forth in this agreement, the property shall be developed in accordance with all township ordinances, including, but not limited to the zoning ordinance. In the event the conditional rezoning agreement documents deviate from the township's ordinances, regulations, or design standards in existence on the rezoning effective date, then the conditional rezoning agreement documents shall control." And I guess this is to you, Mr. Aloya.
Yes.
Am I to understand that if we don't see anything, or if we, if we don't recognize that there is a difference between what's being presented here and the zoning ordinance throughout the course of the approval? um, and the zoning ordinance, uh, throughout the course of the approval of this project, uh, is this saying that, um, oh, well, uh, the conditional rezoning agreement documents will control, uh, when there's a deviation? Because, uh, there's another section that talks about inconsistency, I think it's number thirteen. Um, and that basically repeats, uh, uh, that the conditional rezoning agreement documents will control.
Yes.
And, uh...
Yeah, so, just to give some background, because this is the first conditional rezoning matter that we've had since I've been appointed to Township Attorney. This is a form that I essentially created, uh, and you'll see this repeatedly, so, um, so this, this form has been vetted by myself and administration. And the way this works is that you have a typical rezoning hearing, but this is a conditional rezoning. Uh, and, and mind you, as we've gotten to this point, you've had administration, uh, approve where we stand and approve the document, and approve the conditions that are put in here, uh, that have been offered by the petitioner. So, um, yes, this is different than a standard rezoning, this is an agreement. It has very limited application in the sense that we're only rezoning and allowing certain conditions. So that, that's really what that means, and so, yes, this document does control. He will have to develop the property in accordance with all ordinances, taking in mind the agreement to rezone, the conditions, and the ordinances that apply. So, um, and, and I just, as I said, I, I want, just want to take this opportunity to also say this too, is that this is a conditional rezoning, so technically the conditions are offered by the petitioner. In the event there's something that the Planning Commission would like to see as a condition, you can certainly ask the petitioner today, is this a condition that you are willing to offer? Okay, and the petitioner can say yes or no. It's up to them to offer the conditions.
Understand.
So...
Thank you very much, I appreciate your, uh, uh, information, and, uh... I believe all the other, uh, questions have been answered. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else on the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a follow-up question, uh, to that from Mr. Aloya. I was gonna bring up later, but I think this dovetails with Mr. Bentley's question.
Sure.
Um, uh, Mr. Box, in his department, has summarized the conditions. Mr. Nguyen, I think, has summarized some of the conditions. When I'm looking at this document, uh, I, uh, I one, A through E has the conditions. Is it accurate to say that those are the only conditions that are attached to this rezoning? It seems like we've, we've expounded on some, they would fit in with that, but that's, that's what we're looking at here.
Yes, and just to be clear, and I know this is a, it's a complicated legal document, but A through I are the, are the preamble statements. And then where it says "now therefore," that's actually the, the, the agreement, so that is actually paragraph one of the agreement. Um, that outlines A through H, the only conditions that have been offered by the petitioner. The remainder of it is really standard legal language.
So then I would have a question, this might go, uh, to you, Mr. Aloya, and/or to you, Mr. Nguyen. It says, uh, "As set forth in the plans attached at Exhibit B", which I'm not sure, in the way my packet was put together, if Exhibit B is referring to the general layout, or the, or the, or the, um, building drawings, but we obviously, we're not at site plan, there is a site plan, but I just want to make sure what's Exhibit B and what are we, what would we be recommending approval if we recommended this agreement?
It's the concept plan.
It, it's essentially the concept plan, which will, I mean, ultimately be the site plan that you review and hopefully approve. Um, that is what Exhibit will be that gets attached to this. You don't see it tonight, because it's really not part of the evaluation we're going through tonight?
So, in my, in my drawing, obviously, I have, so, then help me understand what the difference is between approving a concept, and maybe Mr. Box and, uh, Mr. Skerrill can help. What's the difference between approving a concept and approving a final? I, I guess I'm not gathering the difference. Does that, if we approve it and it's a concept and we get to the site plan, is it a, basically approved and we can say, hey, the landscaping can move around? And if it's a concept, but it's not really approval, I, 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 sorry, I just need more clarification, I'm not following the distinction.
Let me try to help out. What you're approving tonight in terms of a concept, you're approving access points. You're approving the number of units, you're approving green belt locations, um, and any other items that are in the agreement. After this fact, you will be looking at, during site plan, you'll be looking at how that green belt is detailed, separation between buildings, building heights, building materials, anything else that you normally go through site plan approval. Following that, then it becomes administrative from the engineering department to go through all their stormwater calculations, sewage calculations, and the real technical aspects of road geometrics. So right now, tonight, based on those, I believe, your seven items? A through, I got an older document. A through H, that's what you're approving. What you're not, so you're just approving general locations of things and making sure this conditional rezoning fits in the context of the surrounding environment, surrounding neighborhoods, et cetera.
Can I just verify, I think Mr. Box might have mentioned A through H. So I might be looking at the wrong portion of the drawing. What I'm seeing here is A through E.
I thought it was A through H, isn't that what you said?
Is it?
Mr. Aloya.
Sorry.
Sorry, A through...
I just want to make sure I have the right agreement sometimes.
It's A through A, A through H. It's, it's the version that was sent out, I believe, yesterday in the morning.
Uh, I have not seen that. Can, just so I can note it on here, can you tell me what F and H are?
Well, there might have been, there were, there were conditions, Mr. Box actually outlined them, uh, in his, in his previous, uh...
Did, and that was one of the reasons I was, I noticed there was, there was additional ones to what I thought I was looking at.
I think we added, uh, as, speaking with the petitioner, a total...
But that's essentially A through H right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, seven and eight are...
Well, the, the, the hundred and sixteen units were the, was the new condition that we added, and I think it bumped down the rest of the, um...
Okay, we added it right away.
In the right of way.
Very good, thank you.
Right-of-way dedication, yep.
Okay, you good, Mr. Tuffield?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public. Um, and I need a motion to do that at seven oh seven?
I make a motion to open, uh, a public hearing at seven oh seven?
A motion by Mr. Bentley, supported by Mr. Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak, please come to the podium and give us your name and address. We're speaking to item A, the rezoning of residential one families.
Oh, six B.
Six B.
Six B.
Oh, I'm sorry, six B. Yes, uh, conditional rezoning of residential one family, urban R one. No? Oh, no, that's, that's coming down. Oh, yeah, that's, it, it's down the line here. Okay. Come on up.
While she's doing that, there is a, uh, an agenda, uh, on the table back there, if you didn't get a copy. And it'll tell you when those are up.
Uh, hi, uh, my name's Nancy Klein. It's spelled C-L-I-N-E. Address is one six seven nine five, Twenty-Five Mile Road, and I'm directly across from the fire station. Um, I apologize if I didn't see the packets that I could get, but I did see a little, uh, portion of, uh, what was displayed. And so I do have a couple of concerns. Um, if you can look, I don't know if you can zero up at all, but I know you said you were gonna provide landscaping. It looks like the, uh, entrance, the Twenty-Five Mile Road entrance would be kind of where the entrance right now is to, uh, the old golf course parking lot. And I'm just trying to get a good idea of, um, how much space from my property line, because if you zero up on that little corner on the bottom, that's my lot. There's a condo that looks like it's gonna, or, I'm sorry, duplex that would be right behind my house. Um, and then along the side would be the drive, which kind of looks like the old drive to the, uh, golf course with an island in between. So, concerns I would have, having this on two sides of my property, is just, uh, I can't tell how close it would come. Um, and once that land is, uh, torn up and, and, and any building would start of any kind, making sure that, uh, it would be done in a way, graded in a way, that would not end up, uh, creating an area that would collect water. I do have an area in the back corner of my yard that typically only in the spring does collect water now, and it's usually that, just that little low, overgrown berm behind my house that stops it from flowing over. So as this is all redone, um, I would want to make sure I, I don't have water collecting on my property because of the way things were, uh, regraded. Um, it doesn't look like, I know that there's landscaping around, it doesn't look like there's much behind my house, and I just don't know, um, the space between my property line and the end of that unit. Um, you know, it's, it's hard for me, I, I realize anything that goes in there is not gonna be what I bought on thirty-four years ago. You know, we, we had the golf course, I took lessons there, I golfed it, I have a, I at least have the great memories. It's a gorgeous piece of property. Um, it wasn't just one of the five courses at Wolverine, it was the gold course, and I remember it being probably one of the most beautifully treed courses. Little bit beyond my skill level, but, like I said, I took lessons there, I have a lot of memories. Played midnight golf there, it was fun. Um, everybody had blade with glow-in-the-dark balls. I know that it's owned, uh, what is currently zoned, it's hard to imagine. I look out on that land every day, and I see what's happened over the years since that course closed, and it bounces back. It just seems to bounce back. Um, and I'm just hopeful. I'm glad that they mentioned the extra landscaping. I just, uh, you know, the two things I have are, are water collecting, potentially on our, ours, properties that come up to it. And, um, just how close that, that unit would be to the back of my house, and how that little wedge be, would be treated. And, uh, I see that drive on the way in from Twenty-Five Mile Road, looks like it has a little island in between, where it would be probably wider than the current entrance to the old parking lot. So I just, uh, just wonder if that's gonna edge closer over to the property line. Um, these are just general concerns of, uh, since it is coming around two sides of my property. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Anyone else? Come on up, sir. And I forgot to remind everyone, you have a four-minute limit, so... And Mr. Bentley is a very good timekeeper.
My name is Robert Tangi, address is one seven zero zero five, Twenty-Five Mile. We're, uh, there's three houses in that little tiny square there. My question right now is, we have a fence that goes all the way around the house and a berm that Wolverine originally put in. Will the berm be staying? Will they be doing tampering with anything with that fence line? Anything of those issues? Also, I see there's no kind of, uh, landscape or anything right behind those homes. There is no homes, it looks like going to be built, there are duplexes. And the other issue is, how are they taking the concrete out? I had issues when Wolverine put the concrete in, being, I'm right on the corner there, with the earth movers and everything. I mean, dishes shaking, had some drywall cracks, but I figured that was bad taping. But now if they're gonna have to come remove that, how is it gonna be done? Is it strictly saw, cut, and lift, or are they gonna come up with hammers? You know, those big machines. I know what Dan Escavating has, so... Okay, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Tangi. Anyone else?
Uh, Robert Miller, five five six eight six, Silver Creek Lane. Uh, real simple, is there any discussions on lane extensions on Twenty-Five Romeo Plank? Um, I'm looking at a lot of rezoning here, we got a Myers coming. Is any talk about adding a fourth lane, two lanes each way?
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah. We'll take all the comments now, and then we'll go to the plenary, and we'll, we'll, okay. Anyone else? All right. Mr. Box, would you like to address some of those, or Mr. Nguyen?
Sure, I can, uh, I can address, uh, the, um, Mrs. Klein's, uh, comments with regards to, uh, the water. That's something that would be handled through the engineering process, which is a later, later process than this. Um, the landscape, with regards to landscaping and, and the distance between those, uh, units in her property line, those are things that would be addressed in the site plan process, following this. Uh, but they would be required to follow ordinance and, and all setbacks met, um, through that process. Uh, with regards to removal of the concrete, I guess I'll defer to, to Mr. Nguyen.
Go ahead. Thanks, and, and yes, for, uh, Ms. Klein, uh, we don't want to cause a water, trapping water problem either, so we'll, we'll be focused on that as we move through the design process. Um, and yes, we will look at, uh, distances closer when we go through the site plan review process. We'll be better able to identify the building behind her, how close the drive is to her property line, and see if there's other treatments we could do to help kind of buffer some of that. Uh, with regards to Mr. Tangi's comments, um, I will look at the old fence. If it's on the property line, it's probably not a problem leaving it in place, if that's the desire. I'd be glad to meet with the residents actually, to kind of go over the details of any of those issues they have. Um, the berm, we have to see how that's placed and how that affects drainage, or does not affect drainage, but we certainly will be installing storms to, or to collect all the drainage, once again, being worked through the engineering process. Uh, removing the pavements, um, you know, asphalt pavements would normally just be lifted with an excavator, just going through it. Um, the concrete pavement that, uh, I believe is there, um, it's relatively in bad shape. It might be easy with an excavator to, to pull those slabs up, and that will probably break as we pull them up, and then we just load them and, you know, haul them away, so... That's, we won't be using jackhammers unless we found, from whatever reason, if they put in, you know, twenty-four inches of concrete pavement, which I doubt we will find. Um, normal excavator will probably be able to pull, pull those slabs out without any problem. Um, and I've got no answer to the additional lane on Romeo Plank.
Okay, thank you.
Like I said, I do have some business cards here for those residents that can contact me, I'll be glad to meet with them directly.
Got you. All right, and anybody else that would like to speak?
Anyone? Close the public hearing.
Then we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, so I need a motion to do that at seven seventeen?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Bentley?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafor, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Mr. Chair, before a motion is made, could I just ask another follow-up question to...
Sure.
Um, and if you may, if I can just stand up here. I'm referring right to this area here and that area up there. Recognizing that what's in our package is a concept, um, is it just a general outlay to maybe support the, uh, conditional rezoning request? Uh, in our packet was, uh, a preliminary, uh, landscape plan. And, um, do you anticipate deviating from that preliminary plan to when it goes through a formal site plan approval? In any way?
I, I anticipate there'd be some, some massaging of it, or, you know, as we look at, say, how close the road is to maybe the neighbor, maybe there's some additional plantings we can do. Those two areas you point to, generally, we are probably keeping as larger open space areas, um, for everyone to u- utilize. Uh, I don't envision a tremendous amount of heavy landscaping through those areas. We want to keep it more of an open, open atmosphere.
Now, we have a drain, I think, that intersects both those areas.
There will be, yes.
Running through there, okay. And that's what I say, I saw in your preliminary plan, you have two different types of trees that are going there, but you want to leave it, I think it, it's your intent to leave it more open space, room to move around, as opposed to heavy plantings and heavy wooded to allow...
You're correct, we want to keep it more open.
Okay, so neighbors can utilize the, you know, the backyards in that open space if they're touch football game or something like that. Okay, and will the drain that will be in there, I noticed that in the concept, uh, in the site plan, uh, and recognizing there might be some shifting in buildings with the duplex units, um, will any portion of that drain be, uh, I guess... units, will any portion of that drain be, I guess, I want to say, is it going to be underground for parts and then visible up, or?
So I think what you're referring to is, it's a heavy line on the plan, a kind of big curve through there, that is not a drain, it's actually the floodplain line.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, that's...
But there will be drainage added to all those open space areas to take that water away.
Yeah, with the plans that we have, we couldn't quite read the labels, so I wasn't sure with that. I see the course, the middle branch of the Clinton River. Okay, thank you.
That's why we'll have a more detailed site plan to follow, right?
Right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up question for Mr. Box and Mr. Skurdo. I just want to verify, we've seen this in front of us before, I think it was in 2017, I don't think you gentlemen were here, but we had some similar discussions to what I want to ask, but I just want to verify. In, in your department's recommendation, you indicate that you feel it matches the master plan. Obviously, it's unusual for us to match a master plan map with a different zoning than what's on there, but I just want to confirm your thought process of it. My understanding is that we are matching the density based on the total area of the site plan that is called out in the master plan, and that's why we're saying it meets the master plan. Is that accurate?
That's correct. The master plan, future land use map shows density, and in this area, it's three units per acre, they're still matching the three units per acre. I think when it came before, conditional rezoning didn't exist, they were just seeking R2L zoning, which would have allowed, I forget the number, he had it up there, it was 200 and something units.
So...
So they're, they're keeping the density within the master plan.
So as, as presented, the additional conditions proposed are essentially in excess of something that would already meet the master plan?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Duckfield. Anyone like to make a...
I just got a quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
This is to Mr. Boya. So if this got, if this went through tonight?
Yes.
And for whatever reason, they decided not to develop it?
Mm-hmm.
They sold it to another party?
Mm-hmm.
Does the zoning stay with the property?
Yes, so this, this agreement's in recordable form, it's going to be recorded, they have 18 months to initiate the development. If they do not do so, then the agreement is, is void unless they get an extension. So it will run with the land. As I'm speaking, I did look at that, Mr. Duckfield, the definition of plans, I do agree with you that it should clarify that those are conceptual plans in the definition of plans, and I will work with counsel for the petitioner to make sure that language is in there, so there's no confusion later.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Actually, I did have one other thing for you. Units, units as building or units as living unit, as defined in this?
Well, this is a condominium, I believe.
Those are living units.
Those are living units, okay.
So it's 116 divided by two is the buildings?
Fifty-eight buildings.
Okay, thank you.
If you want me to put living units in there, or the petitioner...
I just wanted to verify, I was, I was reading it, I pulled up the actual agreement that you sent through Mr. Box on Monday, and I just want to make sure I understood that correctly.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Duckfield. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the conditional rezoning for permanent parcel 0805301008, based upon the recommendations of the appropriate department heads and our legal counsel, and that the property matches, the designation density matches the proposed density in the master plan.
Motion by Mr. Duckfield?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
I'll do that, thank you. Mr. Duckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Brovazano?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes? Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
All ayes.
Okay, all ayes, motion passes. Moving on to the next item, another conditional rezoning, general...
Should these letters, I think they were relevant to this, should they be filed with the record?
That is...
Ms. Derry and Ms...
But I don't think it's for B.
Yeah, I think it's for the senior housing.
Yeah, it's for the senior housing.
Was that what it was?
Okay. Conditional rezoning, general commercial, C2, to residential multifamily low-density R2L. Permanent parcel 0807400016, located on the northwest corner of 24 Mile Road and Garfield, section 07, Hampton Manor of Macomb, petitioner, Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Much like the last one, this is a conditional rezoning, as you stated, this one, they are seeking to go from a C2 zoning, which is commercial, to R2L zoning for the purposes of a senior housing facility. Again, property is at 24 and future Garfield. They also have conditions, we went over similar conditions with the last site, the conditions that they're offering, as well as the concept plan seen here, that the property shall be developed and used as a senior citizen assisted living and memory care facility, and they shall not develop the property pursuant to any other uses within the R2L. Landscaping consisting of a mixture of large trees, decorative trees and shrubs, shall be installed along the perimeter of the property where the abutting parcels are zoned residential. Such landscaping shall result in a 100% opaque screen. Developers shall donate the adjacent Garfield right-of-way to the Macomb County Department of Roads. All legal and assessors requirement for tax parcel combination shall be followed, and development shall meet all other ordinances and follow through with the site plan process. With regards to detention, one of the things you might notice on this last plan, that they don't show any detention there, and I know that's something that you guys will likely ask about, so those type of things will be addressed when I get into the site plan and engineering process. That's just, again, that's a concept of what they're looking to develop, so where that detention would be located is to be determined. Outside of that, at this time, staff has no further objections.
Petitioner, please state your name and address for us.
My name is Bill Thompson from Laner Associates, 17001 19 Mall Road, Clinton Township. We're here representing Hampton Manor of Macomb. This parcel, the surrounding property was developed probably in the 90s, early 90s. This was originally part of that land, but it was held off as commercial property. The owner at that time, Mr. Frank Karam, he had owned it for probably about 30 years now, he passed away this last year. It has gone up for sale, it had been up for sale for 30 years. No one had really considered it developable as commercial property. And at one time, I believe Mr. Karam, I know, Mr. Karam had applied for a similar use, but it was a high-rise senior housing rental project. What is being proposed now is one-story assisted and memory, assisted living and memory care. It's about a 60,000 square foot building, it's broken down. Could you put this ladder for the building? There, inside that, the larger box, there are four courtyards. Every unit in there backs up to open area, either to a courtyard on the inside or to the green area on the outside. It has a, there's a spa in there, there's dining facilities, they have a small theater, it only sits about six or eight people. But the people, the residents in this type of facility, is assisted living, they're there because they can't basically take care of themselves. It's not a nursing home, there's no medical facilities there. They're there because they need help, okay? Somebody helps them with, makes their bed and stuff like that. They don't typically drive cars. Normally, the developer of this site, he has probably eight or 10 of these in southeastern Michigan, and for every resident they have there, or likely for every eight residents they have there, they have one that has a car. So traffic is minimal, so there's very little traffic generated by this. Delivery trucks, they might have two or three a week. It's just, they have their own laundry facilities on-site, so they don't ship laundry in and out, they just have food delivery. They have a kitchen there, and even though each unit has its own small kitchenette area, each unit is pretty much self-sufficient, they have their own bathroom, their own bedroom, living area, sometimes that's combined, and a small kitchen area. Typically, the facade of the building is gricker stone halfway up, then a mixture of siding and stone. Again, it's one-story, the height is typically in the area of 25 feet, so it falls within the ordinance. This, I think, is what a conditional zoning kind of means in this case. It's, we're asking for, to be rezoned to R2L, because that's the zoning that will allow the assisted living in it. But we're saying, even though it's R2L, this is what we're going to build. We're going to build this assisted memory care unit, building, and we'll landscape it, and we'll do it in this fashion. So we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, Mr. Spatafora or Mr. Oliver? Go ahead.
I have a question for Mr. Box, and I'm going to tie it to you too, mister. So if we, if this gets rezoned from C2 to R2L, C2, you need a eight-foot cement wall?
Six-foot masonry wall.
Six-foot masonry wall. So now this will be reduced to landscape berm or?
A green buffer, that's correct.
A green buffer. Okay, now, petitioner, you indicated that your residents here are, need more help than the average senior living home, okay? Would that be something you'd consider leaving that wall there? My only concerns are possibly people getting lost at night or wandering.
Memory care units, which would be about 20% of the site, they're confined, okay? You can't get in and out of the building without sending an alarm, you can't go out without setting off an alarm, you can't get in, period, without having permissions. There is a, if you take a look at the drawing, the top part, the T part, is a memory care unit. The gap between the memory care unit and the rest of the building is, got a fence on it, and it's open so that the memory care people can go out of their rooms into that area, but they can't get out of that area, it's fenced in. And the people inside the balance of the facility, there's no dementia there or anything like that, it's, you know, it's you or me in 20 years, okay?
Easy.
Maybe 10 years for me, okay?
Maybe 50.
Maybe 50, okay. Did you ever get lost on a farm?
You bet.
But the people are cognizant, they're communicating, they're with other people all the time, they aren't likely to be wandering around, and I think the outside doors are all alarmed.
Just following up on that, if it was C2, you would be putting a wall up, because that'd be part of the ordinance.
Yes.
Would there be any consideration, you would look into that with our planners and...
Look into putting a wall up?
Yeah. If it got, if it got to a situation where maybe the residents feel more comfortable or, and maybe I'm out in left field here, but I'm just, I'm looking at this kind of thinking, possibly this were something like that might be needed.
I could get, I could discuss with the developer, but you notice the north property line is in fact the Howard Drain.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm mainly looking at that R1, where the residents are sitting.
Along that northwest boundary line there?
Yeah.
We could look at it, but I would expect that that's where our detention's going to be going.
Oh, you think it'll be going there?
Yeah, it'll be landscape detention, but that, that'll form its boundary too.
I, I guess I'd like to make, you know, knowing that we're completely safe in, in this housing here, with the residents, and the, the residents that are there.
And the neighbors.
Yeah, the new neighbors are the neighbors.
There really, there hasn't been a problem in the past.
How many of these he owns? Eight?
Eight or 10.
Okay.
That's a... Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Spatafora?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Thompson, to amplify condition number one up there, can you, recognizing it's just attached as part of the conditions, maybe in the form of a concept, since the site will have to be more further developed through site plan review, how many units or rooms do you estimate there will be as far as for assisted living, and how many for memory care, if you know?
I think we had 24 memory care out of 80. So I think it was 56 residential units and 24 memory care.
Okay, because on the site data, so it's approximately 80 or so total units, if you will, or living, livable...
Living units.
Living units, okay. It says on the site data on the sheet in our packet, 21 lots, can you just explain what that means on there?
21 what?
It says 20, number of lots, and as I'm reading, it says 21. It's under the site data, I don't know if that was a mistake that was taken from another planner or something.
It doesn't make sense, sorry.
Well, in the plan you attached, the Hampton Manor Assisted Living Site Plan, under site data, there's a parcel ID, there's a site area of, I believe it's 6.156 acres, and then it says number of lots, 21. And that's above the existing zoning C2, which you're here for today, asking for a conditional rezoning.
There must be a typo, that doesn't make sense.
That was what was confusing, I saw that, 21 versus the 80 number of livable, living units, that'll be there. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Anyone else?
I just have one quick question. Other than the culvert going over the Howard Drain, will any portion of that be covered?
No.
So the only access are going to, over to the Howard Drain would be to Garfield, correct? You'd have a culvert?
There'll be the culvert, or there'll be the crossing up there at the north end.
Right.
Actually, the, at the south end, that culvert's going to be extended.
Okay.
But that's, it's not going to be enclosed.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Mr. Bentley?
Just a couple of questions. There were some comments by one of the departments to, I know this is a concept plan, but to relocate the entrance drive and make it either align with one of those two drives on the south side of 20, of 24 Mile Road.
That has been done.
That has?
Yes, we shifted it over, it was more to the left between the two.
Right, that's what we have. And there was, I know this is not site plan approval, but as a concept, I believe there's still a requirement for a sidewalk, eight, I believe an eight-foot wide or five-foot wide sidewalk along the south and, or along 24 and the, I don't know if it would be, need to put in now for a future road, but that's a question I have. Where would it go?
The drawing on the screen shows that eight-foot walk, and there will be a temporary abeyance requested for the Garfield side.
It does show the eight-foot walk?
If you take a look along 24 Mile Road?
I see it built.
There you go, there you got it, okay.
All right, yeah, it's not on ours.
And, and Mr. Bentley, if I could add that, the abeyance would be until Garfield Road is, is developed, and it would be put in at that time. But it's not in their conditions, but it does say that they should meet all ordinance and standards. Doesn't matter what zoning this is, it's on a major section line roadway, so eight-foot pathway is required, regard, regardless... so eight-foot pathway is required regardless of whether it's C2 or R2L.
And does it matter when Garfield goes in?
As far as when?
When it's extended, that they would meet their requirements for the sidewalk and that.
At the time that Garfield is extended is when we would likely have them put in the sidewalks.
There was a note that indicated, at least in our packet, there was a discrepancy between the 18 months. If, if this conditional rezoning goes into effect, there's, they have to proceed within 18 months per the agreement. But there was something I read, I believe it was in the review comments by our planning consultant.
Referencing the three-year?
Three years.
One of the preliminary drafts of, of the conditional rezoning agreement did indicate three years, but yes, our ordinance says 18 months, so that.
18 months.
It is, it is 18 months.
Okay, okay. Great, I appreciate that, and. Is there, we're going to re, or we're, we're considering the rezoning, conditional rezoning to, to R2L. Do we need to separately have a special land use approval, or is that one in the same? Since this is for senior living, a special land use?
That will coincide with the site plan process.
With the site plan process?
We often see special land use site plans come together at the same time, that that's what would be required of this.
Okay, so it wouldn't be done now, the special land use?
Correct.
Even, even though it would have to be a special land use for a senior living?
That's correct.
See what I'm saying?
Yes.
So we could approve this, and if it doesn't get approved later, it's, okay, so it doesn't happen now. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Thompson, you mentioned in your comments that the building would be limited to one story?
Yes.
Assuming I have a current document, which I'm a little jumpy because I apparently didn't keep up on my emails well enough, the contract I have here does not specifically state that. It references the exhibit. Maybe the exhibit specifically says one story, although it's principally a, you know, a site drawing. Is it, are you locked into one story? Is this something that you believe is variable to the, to the, to the site? And if you are locked into one story, are you willing to have that more clearly spelled out?
Well, they have eight or 10 of these, like I said, and they're all one-story. They will stick with one story. We'll put it in there.
And I would appreciate it, and just, just as I mentioned why for you, obviously, this is not master planned to R2L, and one of the advantages to me to deviate from the master plan here is because we can lower the intensity, and part of lowering the intensity is seeing that. So that would be, that would be my concern in this case. Along similar lines, and this might be better addressed at the special land use, so I'll ask the question, but Mr. Box, Mr. Loyah, feel free to push the question off. Do you expect heavy ambulance traffic here? What sort of ambulance traffic does your client typically have?
Ambulance traffic is light.
Okay.
Typically, when an ambulance comes to these pla, if an ambulance does come to these place, one of these places, they shut their sirens off when they get in the vicinity.
Okay, because my concern, again, this might, might be more to the special land use, but I think it speaks to Mr. Oliver's concern with the landscaping a little bit. You've got lights, you've got sound, things of that nature. I have concerns about maybe some traffic flow with, with potential turning around, so I think it's probably better off down the road, but just bear in mind, that's one of my concerns when it comes to the special land use. And the only other comments I would have is, I know we've seen some traffic at this property before, hopefully, if approved, this works out for the township and for the developer. We know we've seen interesting before.
I think it will.
So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
I have one more question for Mr. Thompson. The, the condition that such landscaping at the perimeter where the residential is, as Mr. Oliver had talked about, that that landscaping shall result in 100% opaque screen. Can you, can you elaborate on that?
That's a tough thing to do, but we'll do our best. Arborettes, pines, low growth, evergreen bushes, something to keep it, you know, there's, I don't think landscaping can create an opaque, totally opaque screen, but we'll do our best. It'll be thick landscaping.
And at the beginning, or let's say at the end of construction, would you?
Typically, it takes two or three years to fill out.
Fill out to what heights?
Six feet.
Six feet, so it would be in place of a, a concrete wall?
In place of a poor concrete wall, which, again, I don't think a poor concrete wall's required between R2L and residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clear, this is Mr. Loyah.
There you have it.
Thank you. I also looked at this agreement, which is similar form, and I'll work with the petitioner to just clarify, if you don't mind, that this is a concept plan. I just want to just add some language in there, which.
That's fine.
We both understand that, so, understand that we're just going to clarify that point here.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open it to the public, and I need a motion to do that at 7:46. This is for the Hampton Manor at 24 and Garfield. Do we have a motion by Mr. Spatafora?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so if you have a comment that you'd like to share, well, we'll take all your comments, and then we'll kind of address them at the end. Just come up, give us your name and address, and know that our trusty timekeeper is watching the 40 minutes, four minutes, four minutes.
Forty?
Yeah.
No, four.
Hello, my name is Jeff Appie, 53092 Freida, and I'm actually one of the houses that will back up without the fence around it, and I do appreciate pointing that out, Mr. Oliver, because that is a very big concern for the families in the area. You're going to put in a memory care unit where if, if they do have the possibility to get out, what's going to happen is they're going to wander into the backyard to the community, and they're going to knock on the windows, and there's kids in that community, and that should not be happening. So I really do appreciate that, and I also appreciate you pointing out that there's no way to create 100% opaque wall with trees, because that is what we're looking for. That is what you said you could do, and you said it is not able to be done now. So with that being said, I don't know which way to believe. That is one of the reasons we want to keep it the C2 zoning, because when we did the original research, when we bought our half, our, our house about a year and a half ago, we did multiple research and found out that they have to put a fence around if they're doing it, as well as there was a, what was it, a food, a fast food joint, as well as another, sorry about that, as well as another senior citizen facility that was denied in that location. So with that being said, I don't see what rezoning it's going to do besides make the petitioner lands more valuable. It's not doing anything for our community at all. So with that being said, those are pretty much my comments I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Appie.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Appie. Last name is spelled A-P-P-I-E. I live at 53092 Freida Drive in Macomb, and my husband just spoke a moment ago. What I want to draw your attention to is some of the submitted comments for people who were unable to do here. One includes, I believe, a letter that you should have received from Matthew and Hadiyadi, because they did not receive the proper notice about today's hearing. And so I think it's important to note that. And furthermore, I also submitted comments because I was denied access yesterday when coming to the township office to the site plan. And not only that, I had to submit two Freedom of Information Acts in order to receive this information. How are we as residents supposed to, you know, prepare for a new development coming into our own backyards? Because literally, my house backs up to this adjacent property, and my kids play in that backyard all the time. When we purchased our home, we purchased it with the understanding of a C2 zoning there. So we knew one and a half years ago that several plans had failed, and that we would always have a barrier between that property and our residence. That means a masonry wall, a greenbelt, and as the petitioner pointed out, 100% opaque screening coming in two or three years. First of all, it can't be 100% screening. Second of all, it actually, it's going to come in over time, hopefully. The other conditions that we had concerns about were with regards to the drain. Now, the drain immediately goes around two corners of the site, but there's also natural protected wetlands, and that was one of the other reasons I submitted a Freedom of Information Act request, because I needed to know the status of the DEQ. It had expired, prior to my knowledge, it expired last year. And what I want to know is, are they making sure to follow up flow rates on the drain? We receive a lot of seasonal thaw, and also, we receive a huge amount of storm rainfall in that particular drain, which renders actually on that property, a lot of surface water. And it's not just constricted just to the drain. And so if you take away that vegetation, those wetlands, what you're doing is you're creating a lot of erosion, possibly flooding, and also, you're, you're taking away the, the vegetation that absorbs it. The hydrological absorption is incredibly important. We're not just talking about wildlife, we're talking about the vegetation that literally filters pollutants out of that Howard drain, and it then therefore flows into the Clinton River, the middle branch of the Clinton River. So we had a couple of concerns that here just, I know will probably be addressed in site planning, but I want to draw you to these, these concerns, because as a homeowner, I would really like to make sure that we, we address these concerns prior. Thank you for your time.
Ma'am, you still have a minute left. That wasn't, that wasn't, that was different. So come on back up.
I apologize. I thought that was my timer.
You were trying to figure out how you got there for a minute so quickly.
Okay, so the other thing too is, in regards to the, the DEQ, is we just want to make sure that we purchased our home with the assumption of C2 in our adjacent property. It was a huge factor in our purchase. And when you take something away from us and hope that somebody with conditional zoning will self-impose the right thing, we are very concerned about it as a community, because in exchange for this, the MLAH developer is actually gifting the property of Garfield Road in order to get this conditionally rezoned. I'm very concerned as a resident, why they're doing that, and, and the surrounding property developed, it can cause preventable environmental factors, things like flooding, soil erosion, pollution. All those things would be literally in my backyard, as well as the surface water. So I want to make sure that we really address these beyond just a proposed site, which, again, I did not have access to Hill. I got one Freedom of Information Act at 4:00 PM today. So those are huge concerns we as residents that immediately abut the property need to have answers to now.
That's it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, my name's Carleen Kremen. I'm here with my husband Don tonight. We live in, we live on, we're, excuse me, 16451 24 Mile Road. Okay, we live in the house on 24, next to the property where you're planning to build. First of all, we have a water issue with drainage already, and that would be a concern for us. And you were talking earlier about no one escapes. My daughter's an executive director at a facility just like yours, and escapes do happen. And then we're wondering about, you know, you're talking about a wall. Will the wall separate our house from your facility? Not just the people behind us, we're right next to it. We're going to get all the lights of everybody coming in and out, and it'd be nice to have a wall to block all of that. Sidewalks, you were talking about sidewalks. Are they going in on the north side of 24, or is this Garfield, or what? I was concentrating on something else when that was brought up, so I'd like to know where that is. It'd be nice if we had a sidewalk. But the main concern is the water, drainage, and the, and the wall separating our house from that piece of property. So I guess that's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name's Peter Boye. I live at 53050 Freida Drive. I'm neighbors to Don and the Appies. Actually, our kids are together playing right now. My major concern is just like hers, the safety of our children. We have young children, and also the drainage. During the spring, when it rains a lot, my backyard fills up with water already, and I'm concerned with what they could be doing. It could get worse. So those are my two major concerns.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Going once, twice? Okay, then we will, I will need a motion to close the public hearing at 7:56.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Tuckfield. All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Oliver?
Me.
Okay, Mr. Oliver. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, commissioners, any additional comments?
I do have questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
And maybe that is for Mr. Box. Are we having responses first?
Well, go ahead with your question, and then we'll.
Okay. Because his answer might be that response. Related to, a couple of the residences indicate they have currently some water problems, rain probably in their backyards, what have you. So my question is, are, is this project, regardless of what it is, C2 or R2L, is it obligated to, to correct any water issues on their property if in fact the water isn't going from this property to that adjacent property? And if a wall is put in or berm, would that exasperate it if the flow of the land, the lands, the current land is flowing away from their homes to the drain? Would those be, would those be picked up by, or required to be picked up by a storm system so that it doesn't just collect there at a berm or at a, at a wall?
So I guess to answer the first question, the, the drainage situation, any water or storm runoff situation would be handled through the engineering process, which is after the site plan process, which would be after this process. So several steps away yet. Anything developed on this property, it would not get approved through engineering if it made conditions worse on neighboring property. Whether the wall would potentially impact and disrupt drainage, I, I do not know that answer. I'm not an engineer, so I'll, I'll just say I can't answer that question.
So the question would be, though, if in fact it's found that the grades do flow towards this vacant property from backyards, and I don't know why it would be, because they shouldn't be flowing onto another's property. But if they do, is that something engineering would look at on the, on the adjacent property? Would they, would they look to make sure that it's, they're not interrupting a flow or providing a vehicle for that? or providing a vehicle for that storm water to flow to the drain?
I don't know the answer to that question exactly. I know that they do look at the drainage and runoff created, or pertaining to this subject property. Just how far they look at the neighbor's property, I do not know the answer to that. But they do, I think, look at the system as a whole to make sure that there's not larger concerns upstream or downstream.
Did you have any other comments on some of the things that our residents brought up?
Sure, the question about the sidewalk, so the pathway, the eight-foot pathway would go on both 24 and future Garfield. It would go on 24 at the beginning of any development on this property. It would go on Garfield at such time that Garfield is extended through this area. With regards to the letters, I think you all had a letter sitting at your seat when you got here this evening. There's a couple of letters actually from two different residents. I think they mentioned both of them. And so yes, those should be entered into the record. Why one resident didn't get a mailer, I don't know. I did show you, and what I left on your desk, that they were on our list and a mailer went out. Why it may or may not have shown up at their house, I have no idea. But it was, it was sent out, we do have record of that. I think, were there other questions?
I think that's it.
There was a concern about the perimeter wall, as opposed to a berm.
Sure, the resident is correct, and Mr. Oliver is correct, as he pointed out as well. This is currently zoned C2. If it remains C2, a six-foot masonry wall would be required to buffer themselves from the neighboring properties. By approving this conditional rezoning request, you would remove that requirement.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Box, Mr. Skurdal?
I know, again, I had to point out, Mr. Eloya pointed out earlier was, if there are some issues you still see with this conditional rezoning, you have the right to ask a petitioner, if he was, if he's willing to voluntarily change any of his conditions for your consideration.
Okay. So would this be an appropriate time to ask him to consider a masonry wall? Or God, board concrete?
I, I don't think you could, yeah, you, this would be the time before you make a motion to do anything, is to find out if he's willing to amend his conditions.
Go to the petitioner.
He'd be willing to do that.
Okay.
But I would like to point out that, if you turn around and take a look at the drawing, each one of those lots has a catch basin on it.
Okay.
So all those lots have access to storm drainage.
Gotcha.
And we will be sure with our engineering plans, that the drainage does not go on, our drainage does not go on their property.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, with that.
So, can I just?
Final question regarding that.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
Mr. Thompson, are those catch basins on the adjacent property? They're not on this property?
They are on the adjacent property. They were installed when those, when the site was developed.
Thank you.
So, can I just point a clarification? So he's willing to offer a masonry wall, what, what property line would that be? And obviously, C2, there would have been a certain setback. That won't be required here, I would assume, I'd have to ask Mr. Box, because it's a different. So where would that wall be located essentially, is?
We would volunteer to put the wall on the property line, on the west property line, adjacent to the existing house that's not part of the plat. And the, I think, one, two, three, four, maybe six houses that back up to us. We can't put a wall down the central end of the drain, so that's not gonna work. And I don't think you want a wall along Garfield Road. So we'd reserve the north line, and the east line, and the south line, not putting a wall there.
All right. Do we have a motion with that?
Just a quick follow-up on that wall.
Yes, please, Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Box, just, and Dave, just what he indicated, do you feel we can make something work on this wall?
Yes, I think the wall can fit on, on the line, the property line that he indicated. And he's correct, you wouldn't be able to put a wall on the property line to the north or to the east, because the drain is at that location.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Just, I, I guess, just something for consideration. We have some potential conditions here that are, I think, moderately substantial. A wall is moderately substantial. I'm not sure that I follow whether or not this is in lieu of a landscape buffer, or in addition to a landscape buffer. We also have some comments here, which it sounds like Mr. Box addressed well with regards to whether people got mailers in time. My, my question or comment to the board was, I wonder if it would be appropriate for us to table this for two weeks? Have something drawn up so that we're not approving things that are being worded on the fly and give anybody who wanted the chance to be able to come, the chance to be able to come? Sorry, Mr. Eloya?
Well, I could ask Mr. Box, I mean, the location and whatnot of the, of the wall, we, he stated to be on the west side, but I believe that could be part of the final site plan approval, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So I don't know that we, I think the condition would be, is that he'd be agreeable to put in a wall on the west side, west property line, subject to final site plan approval?
And I guess I was, I was going into this thinking that we would handle it at the special land use and the site plan approval, but I, but if we're, if we're attaching it to the conditional rezoning, if we're gonna do it, I would, I would want to, I think we would want to do it. If, if the board is not open to it, or Mr. Eloya recommends not, I certainly don't want to override something that makes sense. But it seems like there's enough, enough things here, and, and it's been comment for us in the past. If we have comments, or we want to look at things, that we table it for two weeks, make sure all of our paperwork is in order, and bring it back. I'm not even sure if Mr. Thompson is open to it, but just something I want to consider with some of the comments we've had here today.
Except for the wall, I'm not clear what, what other items are open.
I think there's some.
Ma'am, the public portion is closed.
I understand, can I offer a point of clarification? With regards to the water, that, the surface water that is on some of the residential properties? My home, as well as others, we actually have additional land that is technically their property, the petitioner's property. And that is where the surface water is actually residing. We do have storm drains in each of our properties, but the water actually flows during seasonal thaw, as well as flood, floodstorm times. There's a significant amount of water. And it is on that property, so please consider that when thinking about the walls and that type of thing.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion? I guess, are you making a motion, Mr. Tuckfield?
Well, I guess I would ask Mr. Box and Mr. Skurdal. I, I would like to make a motion to table, but I don't want to run through a stop sign that we shouldn't go through. It sounds like Mr. Eloya might be uncomfortable with it, although maybe I'm, maybe I'm interpreting him incorrectly.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we would table, I'm not clear on your comment. The, the only issue that I thought was in dispute was the, the masonry wall they've offered to put on the west side. Obviously, that's gonna be subject to final site plan approval and engineering approval in terms of the location and whatnot, so. You can put that in the condition, that it's subject to those things. So I, I guess I'm questioning what the tableing would be for.
I guess it's for me, my consideration is a combination of things. One, yes, we could put it in there, subject to later, although if we put it in now, I would think, to me, it would be better to state it more now, or do it all later, not halfway in between. But also, secondarily to this, I know our staff does a good job, and I have no reason to believe we didn't here. But when someone says they didn't get a notice, even if it was because the post office didn't work right, I, I'd like to be sensitive to that if we can, as well. Obviously, I don't know where Mr. Thompson's project is, I don't know how Mr. Box is doing. Sometimes, we, we have to go with what we have, but if we have the flexibility, I would, I would certainly rather make sure that we gave people the opportunity than not.
Well, I, just, just to be clear, I mean, the people are here, so they, they, they did get notice ahead of the meeting, they are here. I mean, I listened to what they had said, and the concerns they had really were dealing with issues which were site plan, MDEQ, which is not, they're not gonna get that at the township, I don't believe, because MDEQ's gonna deal with that. So, you know, we have a FOIA process, that's how you get public information, it's a state statutory process. So I, I understand, if you're requesting to table it, that's certainly your purview, but I didn't hear anything in the comment that would cause necessity to adjourn the hearing today.
Understood.
Okay. Do we have a motion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Box, or Mr. Oliver, sorry.
I would recommend a conditional rezoning from C2, from general commercial to residential, multiple, R2L. Parcel number 0807400-016. With, with the, with the added condition of Mr. Thompson to work with the planner and all departments on, on the concrete wall.
Mr. Oliver, if I could.
Yep.
Just, so you remember, maybe you don't want to add it, but also, the condition of maintaining one story, which Mr. Thompson indicated he was open to. I don't want to change your motion, but just recognize that was one of the things that we had discussed.
Well, it was presented as one story.
No, he's correct, that was a new condition that was added to the conditional, they've agreed to. So it's a one-story building, and the wall is on the west side property line, subject to final site plan approval and engineering approval.
Okay, that's added.
So you're adding the wall on the west side?
I'm adding the wall on the west side, in the one story.
Okay.
Is the wall in addition to landscaping, or not, or in place of?
That'll be, Mr. Box can help us on that.
Well, I think it would be in place of the 100% opaque screen. But the R2L still has some, some buffering requirements.
Okay, so it'll be both.
Okay. All right, motion's on the floor. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Provazano. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I should have said Mr. Provazano's second. Mr. Provazano?
Yes.
I apologize. Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on our list is, you know, I'm wondering if some of you wanna?
Do you want to call a recess, five minutes?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess. So, if we could do that.
I think most of the people.
Mother Nature calls. All right, everyone, we're calling the meeting back to order at 8:20. The font is very small on my computer. All right, the next item on our list is the site plan, Regency Commerce Center, Unit 27. Permanent parcel 0817344027, located on the north side of 23 Mile Road, a half a mile west of Romeo Plank Road. Section 17, Marrow Proprietors LLC petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you see on the slide here, this development is just north of 23 Mile, on the north side of Leoni Drive. It is Unit 27 of the Regency Commerce Park Industrial Center. And they are proposing to be developing this in two phases. The site will contain three buildings in total. Building one will be developed in Phase 1. And Buildings 2 and 3 will be in Phase 2. They have met all the setback requirements, parking requirements. They also show some outdoor storage areas within the side yards, and all applicable requirements have been met for those. As I mentioned, the, the parking is sufficient, they have loading zones as required for ordinance. They show the six-foot-high decorative masonry wall, and a 30-foot landscape buffer required on the north end, and two trash enclosures on the property. At this time, staff is recommending approval of this site plan.
Okay. Petitioner, please state your name and address, and do you have something you'd like to share?
Thank you, Simon Morrow with Morrow Properties, representing the petitioner of 48657 Hayes Road in Shelby Township. Thank you, Mr. Box, you did a nice job describing the property. The property is one of the last units left in the Regency Commerce Industrial Subdivision, which is north of 23 Mile Road, just west of Romeo Plank. And that's Unit 27, which is the last unit in the end. It's zoned M1, currently zoning. To the west is M1, to the east is M1. The property would be developed into three buildings. Two smaller buildings consisting approximately 20,000 square feet each. And the larger building is approximately 50,000 square feet. The, the use is going to be like the smaller units. The larger one, it'll probably be a small manufacturing-type facilities, which will bring some jobs to the area. We're anticipating probably on 100 jobs, 100 to 150 jobs, when these, oh, this will be completed. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the project, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Commissioners? Mr. Oliver? You look like you had a question.
Yeah, I do. Mr. Morrow, what are some of the things you can be storing outside? Because you're gonna have some outside storage here. I think typically, like, depending on the use of pallets or something like that, they get in the way with their use, and then they get hauled away. They just need some areas, I mean, we don't anticipate large storage areas. It's just sometimes that, during the manufacturing, depending on whatever process that they're doing, there, there's always a need for a little bit of outside storage. Do you have a lease holder currently? We, we are talking to several. We haven't marketed the site yet, because usually the, the process and the construction process takes a while. So we didn't want to undersell. But there's a, there's a few companies that are looking in the area. Gerber Baby Company is looking in the area. There's a few other companies looking in the area. So we anticipate that the large building might even go quicker, but the smaller units are for the small, like, person that manufactures gutters perhaps, or some of the industrial users that need a smaller unit, a sign maker, or something that manufacture. Smaller users. Or they can take two of the units, or three of the units. So those buildings can be expandable, so they're like 1,500 to 3,000 square feet each. But if they need more, you know, they're flexible on that, depending on what they're gonna do, so.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes. Simon, with our, within our packet, with your building elevations, I'm really sorry, but we, at least on my screen, I can't make out the materials that are used. But can you just very briefly give us a thumbnail sketch of the material used with your building elevations?
Typical, do you, do you have that? Because I didn't bring my poster board, Josh, do you have that?
I don't have it on the slide, no.
Oh, sorry about that, I was gonna prepare, but.
I mean, it's like siding, vinyl, brick, wood?
It'll be masonry. It'll be like exterior block, either painted, or it'll be the, with the ceramic finish to it. It'll be something presentable, like a typical industrial building, it's not gonna be a site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Box, do we need to open this to the public? We do, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I need a motion to open it to the public at 8:26?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. If anybody would like to come up and talk about the Regency Commerce Center, Unit 27, you're free to do that. Anyone? Please state your name and address.
My name is Charles Wyman, I live at 17378 West Grove, that's McComb, 48042. Our property of Butts Regency Center Development. It's currently condominiums, not shown in the pictures. And I've got a few questions for the planning and the commission. How many site plans in McComb have been approved of budding residential property of this nature, industrial? Another one, are there any exceptions for heights for outside storage in McComb for this? Another one, are there any exceptions for heights for outside storage in McComb for this? Have residential complaints been addressed with industrial buildings abutting residential property? What's the plan for noise and light abatement, so we don't have daylight in our backyards all night? And are all the road widths on Leona Drive the seventy-foot as recommended by the commission? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, then I'll need a motion to close the public hearing at eight twenty-eight.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bentley?
Supported.
Supported by Mr. Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mr. Bentley or the petitioner, would you like to address some of Mr. Wyman's concerns?
Yes, sir. Typically, as far as light, noise, and pollution issues, we plan and meeting, you have an ordinance already in place that you have a noise ordinance in place, you have a lighting ordinance in place. We submitted a photometrics plan that's not going to shed any lights to the neighbors, so there isn't anything offensive. And there will be a six-foot screening wall between, to protect the residences from the development. And I think that's typical. Leoni Drive is 70 feet wide, and it's contemplated to continue on. It's an eighty-six-foot right-of-way, and that's going to maintain. That's already there, Leoni Drive. So we do plan on meeting your ordinance for noise pollution and lighting pollution, so there won't be anything out of the ordinary.
Mr. Wyman did state something about storage, that you were possibly exceeding the height?
You know, they've got some buildings in that area that store pallets forty feet high.
Okay.
But that's not going to happen. Your maximum height, I believe, is 25 feet in this district, and we're planning on meeting that for the building, not so much the pallet. There won't be pallet storage, just.
Okay. Petitioners, anything? Or petitioners? Commissioners, anything?
Did Mr. Box have any additions?
Sure. So I believe the outdoor storage, the chain-link fence that they proposed, it's required to be fenced. The chain-link fence can be six feet or eight feet, and whatever dimension that they create with that fence, storage cannot be taller than that fence. So if they put up a six-foot fence, storage can't be taller than six, and eight-foot can't be taller than eight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on that and a question for Mr. Box. If someone was to store higher than that, that would be something that would be directed at the township code enforcement?
Correct.
To correct violations of that matter.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, no one else? Do we have a motion?
Did we get something?
Well, there was a question about how, I don't know how you could identify it, but how many sites have been approved? Industrial sites next to an R1.
An exact number, I do not know. And the property next to this is not R1, I don't believe. I think it's R2. But Leoni Drive continues to the west quite a ways, probably over a mile. I mean, there's segments, there's pieces missing, haven't yet been developed. But for over a mile on the north side of that, all the way down is adjacent to residential property. And I would say the vast majority of that within McComb Industrial or Quadrate, the other industrial developments down there, those are already constructed and approved site plans and constructed buildings.
Okay, good, thanks. I need a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, we closed the public portion. No, no. Motion, I need a motion, folks. You can talk to them afterwards, and then that will work.
If there's no further discussion, Mr. Chair, I'll recommend site plan approval for Regency Commerce Center, Unit 27, and parcel number zero eight seventeen three forty-four zero two seven, as presented by our departments and recommended by them as well.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora, seconded by Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. E, the last one. Site plan, Pitchford Park. This is for you, ma'am. Permanent parcel zero eight two zero four two six zero two seven, located on the west side of Romeo Plank Road, north of Twenty-two Mile. Section twenty, McComb Township Petitioner. So you're playing both roles?
I think we have some other staff here that can speak to this.
All right, well, we'll start with you, Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you mentioned, this is a site plan for Pitchford Park. This is a property that I think Mr. Oliver mentioned to you guys a while back, was donated to the township for the purposes of developing a park. The property is north of Twenty-two and on the west side of Romeo Plank. The site plan that we're looking at has tennis courts, pickleball courts, some walking pathways, as well as a dog park, detention pond, and some parking for the site. And I would like to note the south area, south of the Denrider Drain, will remain undeveloped at this time. Access provided from a new curb cut off Romeo Plank. Our ordinance does not require a specific amount of landscaping. They are proposing a fair amount of landscaping to the north, as well as around the residence that still remains on Romeo Plank. The west lot line and the south portion will remain in their natural state, as the drain does provide some buffer there between the residential area. At this time, site plan approval is recommended by the staff.
Okay. I'm assuming parks and rec, come on in. One of you, both of you, whatever. Just want to see if you have anything to share.
I don't, you guys have any? I don't think they have any presentation. They're here for questions.
Nothing to share?
There's questions.
All right, then we will go to the public portion, am I correct? Oh, no, commissioners. Boy, I'm just messing up all over the place.
It's okay.
Do you have any comments from our commissioners?
I have, I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
So my question's related to sidewalks. And I don't see, I see our path, the half-mile and I believe it's a quarter-mile path. Is that on here? No. And, but I don't see and wondered if there is a requirement for a sidewalk along Romeo Plank Road to meet our zoning ordinance.
So there is, there is one on the north end shown here, the pathway.
Yes, but that's the pathway, right?
That's, that's the pathway that will be along Romeo Plank Road, connect to the adjacent residential properties. And maybe Jim, I don't know if you want to field the rest of that.
Yeah, so we, this, this park is going to be built probably two or three years before Romeo Plank is widened. I think you've all heard about that possibility once Twenty-three Mile is done. The county is just starting to work on their environmental assessment. They've given the township some information on what the costs are going to be. The township board will be considering that soon. But same reason that we do want to put sidewalk along Garfield until Garfield Road is in, we don't want to put sidewalk along Romeo Plank and then have them tear it out when they go to widen Romeo Plank. So we're going to leave it out. And then with the road widening project, the federal government requires that the sidewalks go in, so there'll be an eight-foot path along that whole stretch as part of that project. It'll all be constructed as one project.
So with that, Mr. Tiflin, what happens to the pathway that's shown currently now on the north end? Does that get ripped out and replaced?
It might. It just depends on what utilities they have going in there. We have a water main to replace. The gas company, electric company may have some, you know, other, of their utilities that need to be replaced as well. So sections of it may have to go. The whole thing may get ripped out. It just depends on what they have there. So what we tried to do is tie it into the adjacent parcel, just so there was some connectivity. But the remaining sidewalks, there aren't sidewalks until you get down to Twenty-two Mile, and that's tough just because of the nature of that intersection.
Okay. One more question, I think a simple question. Just trying to understand, in the court area, the tennis courts and the pickleball courts, it indicates that there's a ten-foot-high black vinyl-coated chain-link fence right at the perimeter of each pickleball court. And I would think, and then, and then there's another note that says a three-foot-high black vinyl-coated chain-link fence in between the, the two pickleball courts, the sets of two pickleball courts, and between the tennis courts, as well as separating the shelters. Is that a, is that a mistake? Are the ten-foot-high vinyl-coated chain-link fences around the entire perimeter of that court area? And then the interior fences, three-foot?
Yes.
With gates, I suspect?
Just keeps the ball from going from one court to the other.
Or out into the properties around?
The shorter fences is what I'm talking, yeah, the taller fences do the same thing for the remaining property.
There was also a note regarding just what would be north, I guess, of the detention pond, where you have picnic tables. It said picnic tables and grills. And it did show that you're going to have picnic tables. Are these permanent grills as well going to be adjacent to those, each of those picnic tables?
I don't think we have.
And I'm sorry, I don't, let me see if I can get to that.
I think it was only picnic tables that were proposed.
That's on sheet LS two.
Yeah, we weren't planning on having the grills there, no.
No?
No.
No grills?
No.
Okay. What was my other question? Did I? Yeah, I think you've answered all my questions, other than how come there's not more pickleball courts? But other than that, it's... It's good, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else?
I have one question. Sal, we directed to you. If I want to bring my dog in a dog park, do I have to have a pass through the rec center? Do I have to prove that my dogs have license? Will it show my time in and time out?
Yeah, so what will happen is you would have to register your dog. We'd need all the vaccinations. You have to have all that proof. You would then get a key fob, and then you would swipe it to get in the park. And we would be able to tell the time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And I think the high fences around the pickleball courts, I played pickleball for years. I think it has to do with a lot of using the plastic balls and the wind blowing in and out of the courts. So I think that's more of a wind precaution than anything, sure. And it's a great sport, and I'm glad we're finally getting outside for our township residents.
Okay.
Quick question.
Mr. Oliver?
The shelters, is it going to be roof, no sides, just a roof? Will there be any electrical in there for plugging in stuff? Or will there be no service, electrical service in there? Will there be lighting in there?
In the picnic pavilion, there's a comfort station where there's bathrooms. There'll be electricity there, but the rest of the shelters throughout would just be a place to keep out of the sun.
Okay, and will this facility have a time that we're going to?
Yeah, dusk to dawn, just like Waldenberg Park is.
Okay, all right. That's it, I think a lot of questions have been answered. Thank you.
I have another question.
Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
Two questions, I guess, wanted to follow up with Mr. Oliver. Is, so after hours, before hours start, is it, is it locked up? Is the gate locked up?
Yeah.
Is, will there be a gate?
Yeah, typically, there's, there's somebody that opens the gate up at eight or nine in the morning, depending on the day, and then closes it up at night.
Okay, and then related to the track, the walking track, and, and it going through the existing wooded areas, and it indicated on some of the notes that nothing is to be moved, nothing is to be removed or constructed near, near the roots of trees and such. Is this laid out such that you could get something in that wooded area, get a pathway through there? Just wondering how it happens when you have those restrictions.
Well, we'll have to clear trees to get the pathway in, and to get the equipment and to build the path. But the idea would be to keep as many of those trees along that west property line as we can.
Okay.
And then we're supplementing that with other plantings that are shown on landscape plan.
Okay, so it's, it's not going to be a no-touch deal? You know, just find a way to get through there and, and make your pass?
Yeah, minimize it as much as we can.
Gotcha. I think that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else? Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, just following up on that, Mr. Van Tiflin, and I'm not sure, obviously I can tell, I didn't walk the site, but I can tell from the satellite, there is landscaping along the west. Obviously, some of it will get disturbed. And it's hard for me to compare it to the drawing. There's landscaping along the west end. My concern, we've seen a dog park before several years ago. Members of this commission remember the, were there, remember the comments we had. A lot of concern was given at the time about noise. I'm not sure if we'll hear residents here tonight. I know at the time that we looked a lot into dog parks, and I know I was surprised, having visited them, how quiet a dog park is. It's not what I would have anticipated. However, seeing as that I think one of the major things we're looking at tonight is landscaping, I guess the question would be, are you planning on making sure all those holes are filled along the west border? I can't tell from the drawing if we are. It sounded like you were indicating we would be. Yeah, the, the dog park is, is over near Romeo Plank. We put it in an area that is fairly isolated. There are, I think there's only two neighbors. We own the property south of the drain. That was part of the donation. That will be sold off probably at some point in the future, hopefully. So I don't think there'll be very much of an issue to the west. Mainly, there'll be walking trails, is what we're proposing, on, along that west property line. So, and again, we're, we're going to put the path in. Our goal is to have the path have a, kind of an even number as far as how many loops would make a mile and that kind of thing. So that kind of dictated where the path would have to go. We're going to save as many of the trees as we can, and then supplement that area with, with the additional landscaping. Do you expect, a general question, but again, I can't tell, do you expect there to be, to be, it looks like there's a fairly wide hole, maybe one parcel wide on the west corner, or the west side, that while probably multiple hundreds of feet west is in line with the dog park to the residential? Do you expect that to be mostly filled, intermittently filled? What's, what's your expectation there? Because it looks, on the drawing, there's, looks like there's two, maybe trees or plantings to the west side of the pond, which I assume is roughly that, that gap. I can see in the satellite view, it looks like someone has a bridge across, and they might have some picnic tables there. That would be my only concern. I don't know where our lane is here. I know we had this question when we did the dog park. You know, what are we requiring, and what are we not? But as far as landscaping goes, I, I recognize what the dog park noise is, but I know from before, that's, that's going to be the concern. Of all the other things here, everything looks really good. I think the township is, you know, will benefit, you know, the benefit of the township a lot. I know from experience, there's going to be a lot of concern there with the landscaping. Yeah, again, I think we've, we've tried to preserve as many of those trees as we can and provide the additional landscaping, yet, you know, put the pond in, make the dog park as, as large as we can to, you know, to accommodate anybody that wants to use it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else? All right, well, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public. It is eight forty-seven. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Open a public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Shudo? Motion by Mr. Shudell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bentley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll start to, come on upstairs, please. Again, make sure you state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
Great. My name's John Maholsky, four-eight-zero-eight-four Tilch, McComb Township, four-eight-zero-four-four. Well, this is the third time around for pickleball courts. Um, I'm hoping that, one, it's funded, and that we get them. One, the comments was made, yes, I agree with the point saying not enough pickleball courts. But there is an option where that, while, while we're painting the lines for the tennis courts, we can also paint lines for the pickleball courts. And I, we have done that, uh, at various other locations where they use an alternate color, and that works out fine. So, we, we could use portable nets that would give us four additional courts. So, from that standpoint, cause a pickleball court fits on basically half of a tennis court, so the, the, the nets of a tennis court would stop, uh, would be the dividing line. One of the things I strongly recommend as a gold standard, to use Clinton Township down by their senior center as the way to do pickleball courts. And when I say that, I say that for the surface, and I also say that for the nets that they use. Because those are too excellent, they've been up for over three years now. The surface is, is in really, still really great shape. And the nets have, uh, has weathered the storm through the, the normal spring, summer, and fall. And so, from that standpoint, that's one of the thing. It was talked about the hours, I want to just address that. Eight to nine, we'll open it up. When you say dawn to dusk, that's, let's set a time, let's say they're gonna be open at eight o'clock, and they're gonna close at eight-thirty. Whatever, whatever the time might be. Because you tell us, as pickleball players, you're opening it up, we're gonna be there at eight o'clock. So, from that standpoint, there's a lot of people. Um, the other thing that we have to make sure is that, as you talked about the, um, ten-foot-high, we gotta make sure we have wind screens. That's one of the things that should be, make sure is incorporated into the plan for both sides. Pickleball and tennis courts, because that's very important for them to do. The other thing is, I know it's a small thing, it's an add-on, but one of the things that we should make sure that we plan for is a, is a paddle rack for the pickleball. Because as we get people there, and you're gonna have the four courts that are gonna be busy, you got groups of people, you're gonna, uh, people put their paddles, uh, waiting for that. So, I think it's important that, as, you know, McComb Township is growing, it's coming close to a hundred thousand people. We've got a lot of the retirees, the original people that came here, myself, I came here in eighty-four. It's great to see that we're gonna finally get this. I've been told it's in the budget for this year, and I think it's important that we set a date. And I'd like to, so, you know, work with people. We have John Wilson, and we have, um, Mary also, is that we'd be more than willing to help you out on, you know, uh, if you have questions about pickleball and the things that the players look for and, and they need. Because if we build it poorly, like they did in Shelby, people will not come. It'll be a waste of money. You'll see people out there, and what it is, is that the surface is poor. It's a horrible surface. It tears up your, uh, your equipment, and tears up your, your body. It's a cement surface. And so, from that standpoint, I'd like to make sure that, uh, that McComb Township does it right, and people say, hey, let's go over there and play, because it's a great place. And eventually, we'll, you know, we'll have tournaments. And so, from that standpoint, that'll draw people into the township and draw money into the local establishments. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, um, my name's Jeff Barkley. Uh, I live at four-nine-seven-zero-five Hidden Valley Drive. Um, my condo is, uh, right in back of this proposed park. And, um, there's not much about this that me and my neighbors really like. The pickleball court is in absolutely the wrong spot in the park. You need to flip this entire, uh, plan here, so that the pickleball court is over where you've got the dog park. Pickleball, if you've, uh, never played it or never been around it, is, uh, it's a fascinating game. It's, uh, fastest-growing, uh, sport, I think, in the country right now. But it is unbelievably noisy and aggravating. Uh, I have a condo in Florida. We've had a, a lot of trouble with, uh, pickleball, with guys who wanna play pickleball at seven-thirty, eight o'clock in the morning. You've got a bunch of seniors, uh, that are retired. We like to sleep in. I don't wanna wake up to pick, 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 pick. Now, this plan here, if we could flip it, you would have the pickleball court as far away from the residents on any side. And the dog park really isn't gonna bother anybody. But the pickleball court is beyond annoying. And if you haven't seen that, and if you approve this, I'm gonna find out where you live, and I'm gonna come bang on your doors with a pickleball. And then you'll know what I mean. Um, that's, that's my only real concern. But the other thing I, I don't hear about is, is a wall. Now, in our, and, and where we live right there, I'm not interested in having picnickers or pickleball players or anybody with their kids or anything walking those tr- through those trees in my backyard. Right now, I have a, uh, if you wanna call it a buffer, I've got a wide-open field that nobody wants to walk through. It's full of ticks and bugs and everything else. So, we don't get anybody there. If you mow that all down and turn it into a park, and you're just gonna throw up a couple of trees, people are gonna be wandering around in there. And I don't think that's fair to us as residents. So, if you wanna put this park up, the park up, and I don't object to it at all, I think we should have a barrier between, um, you know, between our, our, our little condominium complex and the park. Um, I th- I can't think of anything else to tell you right now, but that's, that's kind of the way I feel, and it's the way quite a few of my neighbors feel. Does there anybody else here from our, our condo complex? That feels the same way? You have a safe pe- people coming up here?
No, you re- you can't do that. You can't take a survey. No, no, that's my job. Thank you. All right, next.
I'm John Bush. I live at four-nine-seven-two-nine Hidden Valley Drive. Gotta say, I think the plan should be flipped also. For pickleball court isn't right behind our condos, where all the noise is gonna be at. If you put it at the other end, there's nothing over there, really. There's a big buffer between them and the houses on the other side of the drain. So, the plans need to change. And again, we do need a barrier, so that we don't have people looking right in our windows. We need something that's gonna go up between that area. The noise of playing the pickleball and the tennis and everybody in that area is gonna be a big concern. Right now, it's like a private park for us. It's full of wildflowers, butterflies, deer, all kinds of wildlife back there, rabbits, all kinds of birds. So, it's a concern for us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Shabrow, four-nine-seven-eight-six Alpine Drive, also in Hidden Valley. Where the pickleball court, and I don't have an objection to the park, it's gonna be great, my grandkids are all excited. But where the pickleball court is, I am the last unit, I'm a corner unit, and then I'm, uh, Romeo Plank, and then that pickleball court, I'll be right there. Our windows are very low, so to put this ten-foot fence, I just, I'm like, you're gonna ha- if you can change it, I strongly agree, if you could. Um, I just don't wanna look out to that ten-foot, whatever. So, and I agree, if there's some kind of a berm or something between us, and the park would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
I'm Kay DeZinski, and I live at four-nine-seven-three-zero Willowood. Um, and we hit the drain in our backyard, so this will be directly in my backyard. And like someone has, you know, some of the people have said that we've had an open field there for twenty-five years, so this is gonna be a big adjustment for us. Um, I'm just concerned about, um, my neighbors and us that live along that drain there. About the lighting, the noise. I mean, I know that the, the condominium wants to look out for themselves and move it all down by us, but it, it's just gonna, I, I'm concerned about, um, the hours, people going through my backyard. Um, I have no trees or anything right there to, uh, cover or, you know, separate the two, so I guess we would be looking straight onto the, to the park. I don't know what kind of landscaping that you plan on putting back there, but we need some kind of division. Um, the lighting, I have, I think, the kitty part right there and the pickleball, that'll be in my backyard, so that's gonna be a lot of noise. Um, I, I just want you to take into consideration the people that have lived there for twenty-five years. Yeah, and, and looked onto nature and all that kind of stuff, and now, just, just make some kind of division where it's nice to look at, and no lighting, you know, shooting in on our backyard and stuff. Just consideration for the neighbors that live behind it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Ron Hudson. I'm four-nine-seven-two-six Alpine Drive. Uh, I agree with Jeff about switching the pickleball court, flip-flopping. I agree with that tremendously, because my backyard is right there. Uh, there's one thing I'd like to mention about Romeo Plank. You have an entrance probably in the northern part going into the park. Well, as you can see, Romeo Plank has got a turn on it like you can't believe, which is very dangerous. Our entrance to our subdivision is north of there, so you got two main left-hand turn lanes that you might have a problem with. And another thing about the sidewalk, you don't wanna put the sidewalk in, because you know you're gonna, uh, increase the, the width of Romeo Plank. Or aren't you putting the, the, the cart before the horse, or the horse before the cart? Let's widen the damn road first. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Um, hi, Michelle Meech. I'm at four-nine-five-eight-two Willowood. My backyard backs up to, um, the area. One of, like, my concerns is I'd like, you know, trying on the map, you can't tell, but as far as what is the distance? I'm concerned about the location of the parking lot, and like, how far that really would be from my lot line. I know there's a detention pond, and there are some trees that you have, um, put in there. So, be interested in like, what sort of, how close one, the walking path is gonna be, and what is the distance between the parking lot? Um, and then also, I, now that I have some concerns, um, we, we've been there for twenty-plus years, and we have quite a bit of landscaping backed up, where we have our arborvitaries and that, and I'd be very concerned if those were damaged with the, this going in, particularly with this park going in. If what we already have set up to block it is destroyed, that would be, um, quite upsetting. Um, I agree with the condo people on the location of the pickleball, like where they're concerned about their yards. I do think that's some things that need to be taken into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laney Fridley at four-nine-three-four-nine Carls Drive, McComb. So, I'm right on, um, I bu- my, uh, property is to the south side where it's gonna be undeveloped. Do you have plans for that in the future, or is that just gonna remain undeveloped?
They, they won't answer any questions, they'll answer them after.
Right. But we'll...
Oh, okay.
We'll address some of the issues at the end.
Okay, so, that's my concern, is what's gonna happen to that piece of land? Are they gonna clean it up a little bit while they're cleaning up everything else? Because everything is super overgrown. And, and then if they aren't gonna develop it, what's gonna happen to it? So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Getting late, guys. Reminds me, when I used to have to work the Warren City Council meetings, every, anybody, everybody knows the history they have. But anyways, my name's Henry Pyhowsky, uh, one-six-eight-five-zero Boulder Way. Uh, I just wanna reiterate what John said about the surface. That's, that's really important. We gotta have the right surface, because if you don't, it's just gonna sit there and be a waste of time and money. Uh, Dent Township up by Houghton Lake, I was a part of the committee up there that got their t- courts. It was almost the same situation. They got free land, and, uh, they came to us, they got it from the school district when they closed one of the elementary schools. And once the school closed, they just tried to decide what to do. They went to the community, much like we did the survey here in the community, and one of the things was the pickleball courts. And they got it done. And they came to us about the surface, and to be honest, we, they were looking at the concrete first. They didn't realize that plays a big role in, uh, how many, how much people are gonna use it, and the toll it takes on knees, hips, and ankles. Uh, use the right surface, and they're gonna be there, they're gonna play there. And on another note, I wanna thank the township, Parks and Rec, especially for the rec center we got and what you guys do for us and for my grandkids, cause we love it here, and my kids now are growing up here with their grandkids, and thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir. I think we get the idea of the pickleball, and you, you kinda wanna change it and move it or whatever. So, if you got something new, I mean, that would be great. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, my name is Jeff Beach. I'm at four-nine-three-four-four Willowood. Um, my property backs up against the southern part, that it's not gonna be developed. Um, I, uh, do wanna ask the question that was asked earlier, though, as, as well, just to make sure we address it. Um, there is a lot of, uh, overgrowth and a lot of trash, actually, that's back there, of people that have dumped things. Um, since my property is back there, I do spend a lot of time cleaning up, uh, just to make a lease a little bit presentable to look at. Uh, but now that I know who owns the property, uh, I would like to, you know, see that it's taken care of a little bit better.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Jeremy Fisher, four-nine-six-two-five Romeo Plank Road, uh, lifelong resident of the, the red brick farmhouse right in the middle of all this. Uh, so, it's, uh, valiant of the Pitchford family to, to donate the land to the township. I can, I commend them for that. Uh, but it's kinda created a little more of a situation for us. Uh, to say timing is impeccable, we had just purchased a new property in Bruce Township, uh, two days before we were notified that the donation happened. So, it's made a bit of a hard sell to even get a Realtor to show up when they sit in a half-mile of traffic on Romeo Plank Road, sit in the driveway to leave, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes to try and pull out. Now, we have the, uh, added part to it that, with the park going around the home, uh, trying to create some kind of value for the prospective buyers coming in. Um, I don't, if there's anything out with the site plan, it's gonna say, if the dog park is seven days, uh, dawn to dusk, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, what, uh, what we can show them, uh, in regards to trespassers or possible, you know, people missing the driveway for the park. Uh, there's a horseshoe driveway around the house right now, which we occasionally have. Uh, U-turn people come through in traffic. Uh, I'm sure that would increase with, uh, anything with the park, people trying to pull out or pull in. Um, I don't, don't have any other questions or concerns at this time.
All right, thank you.
Tim Fisher, uh, four-nine-six-two-five Romeo Plank Road. That was my son Jeremy who just spoke. Uh, I got some of the same concerns, I guess. We were hoping to, we held on to this piece of property to sell it when the housing market is like it is right now. And, uh, it's, we would like to see if the, if the township would even consider, uh, you know, buying it, cause, uh, it's, I really don't wanna be in the middle of it. You know, it's the same thing. They, uh, it's my, the value of the property went like this, you know, I couldn't, the way the houses are, everything else, but there's not a whole lot of people are gonna wanna buy a house right in the middle of a park, you know? So, uh, we had asked that they might consider, uh, taking a look, second look at purchasing it, and, uh, and if they don't, then I would like to see the, uh, that the water, the sewer and, uh, storm drain taps and stuff, that we could, uh, uh, get access to that right up to the property, so, so we can, uh, update it to try and sell it, you know? So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Maholsky, I think I got thirty seconds. Real quick, I just wanna clarify, I know everyone is talking about lights and things like that. I want you to clarify that I believe from what you said, there are no lights on the tennis courts and no lights on the pickleball courts, so, and, uh, hopefully you can address that for the people. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Anyone else?
No lights.
Please state your name and address.
Diane Barkley at 49705 Hidden Valley Drive. If you put lights, that means you, they could play all night long, we wouldn't get any sleep. It seems like you can move the tennis and the pickleball over to the dog park and put the dog park over where the pickleball and tennis court is. It's a simple flip-flop and I don't care if dogs are out there, I've got a dog and they don't make that much noise and you're really right up next to 12 condos and each and every one of those people should be here tonight and I'm sorry they didn't show up, but this is very serious. We, our property value is gonna go down the tubes. Who's gonna wanna say that I'm gonna live next to a pickleball and a tennis court? Bing, 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 all day long? I've heard the pickleball. In Florida, we live by one and I'm begging you at the mercy of this board to have them just flip-flop it. I'm not saying take the park out of there, the lady donated it, that's fine, what are we gonna do about it? But please, consider flip-flopping it. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Anyone else?
Okay, at this time, I'd like a motion to close the public portion at 9:09.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, Mr. Box or any of our township representatives, do you have anything you'd like to share about our citizens' comments?
The first thing I would add is that I think there's not any lights proposed at the park at this time. With regards to some of the landscaping questions, I think there, you know, the site plan, the landscape plan shows existing trees as well as other trees that will be in there to supplement. I think Mr. Van Tiflin touched on that earlier. I think the rest of the questions had to do with flipping, flipping the site plan, I guess.
Mr. Van, no, no, public portion is done. Thank you. Mr. Van Tiflin, do you have any comments about the flip-flop?
Obviously, we would have to look at that and see how everything would fit. You know, up to this point, every place that we've tried to put a dog park, we have gotten a lot of complaints about noise.
Sure.
Honestly, this is, we're shocked that this is what we're hearing because normally it's, we won't want the dog park anywhere near us. So we can certainly take a look at it and see, you know, if we can make it work the other way.
Well, we had two or three residents that were pretty adamant, so if you could hang around after the meeting is done, maybe you could chat with them for a while. Okay, all right. Missioners, anything?
I got a question.
Mr. Oliver.
I, Mr. Maholski, the pickleball captain, I gotta ask ya, I just need a little help on pickleball. Okay? All I do is work, so.
And one day you'll get to where I'm at.
I probably doubt it, but what's the deal about the surface? This briefly, we don't need to know.
Real briefly, the difference of the surface is if you think of a true tennis court surface, it has, it has just enough of a little give, it's like, if you wanna think of it like an asphalt versus a cement and the asphalt has a little give and it's a lot easier to play on the legs and the knees of the, because most of the people who are playing it are seniors and basically it's very hard. Difference is just real easy. I can play at Clinton Township for two and a half hours on the same condition, I can only play for about an hour and 10 minutes at Shelby because it's that hard on the legs and also the cement tures up the equipment a lot quicker, the ball, your tennis shoes and things like that.
Okay, and the noise? Are people screaming, yelling?
The noise, well, there's people by Shelby Township that are like in the same proximity and there's been no complaints from what I've heard. Yes, I understand that the pickleball does make noise, but I think by, from the standpoint of containing it, the majority of their play is in the morning, starting when it opens to around 11 o'clock. There's no noise because very few people play in the middle of the day and then you're gonna get people who play from 6 to 8 o'clock. That is the normal time that you'll see the courts occupied and will be busy because normally by the noon time, it's getting warmer, it's getting hotter and the old folks like us, we wanna go to have a lunch and take a nap, so.
That must be nice to be retired. I should look into that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else?
There was a question.
There was a couple of things that came out real quick that I'd like to address. So as Josh said, there will be no lights, so obviously they won't be playing in, late in the evening, so that shouldn't disturb the neighborhood. The other thing is there will be set hours like our other parks. Parks open up at 8 o'clock and they will close at dusk, so again, they're not gonna be playing too late because there's no lights to keep them out there. It's different than McComb Corners Park, which has lights and people play baseball till later in the evening, but it won't, that won't be a concern.
Okay, thanks.
There was a question about a hard wall separation between the residences and the, and the park. Any response on that?
Is not a requirement per ordinance to have any fencing of any kind between a park and a residential property.
Anything else, Mr. Benly?
Looking. No, not right now.
Okay. Are we all good? Mr. Duckfield?
Mr. Chairman, I just did want to bring up one question, just to give you guys the opportunity, I don't know if there's an answer tonight, but a couple of people mentioned the property to the south, looking at it from the satellite, I'm not sure I'm familiar with it. You did mention that we might be looking, we as in the township as a whole, because it's all of us here, might be looking to sell that at some point down the road. Is there anything you can give us tonight on that as far as an update?
Yeah, the township has hired an engineering firm to do a feasibility study on that property and what we can do with that property. Because of the drain, it would be difficult to incorporate that into the park, so it may be that, you know, the engineering study comes back and says that it could be developed as a continuation of the subdivision. That's why there were two stub streets that were left of that property. At one point, probably 15 or 20 years ago, there was a plan into the planning commission for review and approval. That project never went anywhere. There's some floodplain, obviously there's some issues with the county drain that need to be worked out. We gotta make sure that you can lay out a potential development on that property, it's very small, it's narrow, you know, between the end of the stub street and the drain. So all that's being, being looked at right now, we just don't have any answers on it yet.
Okay, very good. And then the only other thing I wanted to follow up on was I was also, was also glad to hear that there's not as much concern about the dog park as there has been in the past, obviously it's something we've heard. And just to follow up that hopefully if we remove trees that aren't shown as root here, that we're able to fill in the buffer to the west. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Spatafora?
Did FPA design come up with any type of other landscape designs for the township to consider? Okay, so you provided the information to Joel over there at FPA and decide, you know, asked him, this is what we want, put something together, I mean, as far as the location of the tennis courts and pickleball courts and things like that or?
Wait, wait, we need to get him up.
Jerry, we need, we need you to come up to the microphone over here, please. You're not being recorded. Just take your name and address too, just for the record.
My name is Jeff Alagat from Anderson X on the West Track, 51301 Sheiner Road.
Okay.
And I don't know if I need to repeat that?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Basically, the landscape architect, we provided a base and he, he went through a couple of schemes that we went over with the township prior to this meeting, just to say, here's our preliminary, go at the landscaping.
Okay, was there any thought of maybe as some of the residents indicated to flip-flop the dog park with the tennis courts and the pickleball court? Is it something that's feasibly can be done?
I, I think like Jim mentioned before, I think we'll have to discuss this and see how feasible it is with the layouts.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
As in, as in most site plans, don't we also look at materials? So what was the plan for the court materials? I know that we've, it's identified on our packet, you know, the fences, all of the furniture, things of that nature. What was the thought there?
It'll be an asphalt surface. We've been speaking with the pickleball group, this is our third location for this, these courts, so we've had extensive discussions. We are pretty far along with a different site, so we just basically took that information and put it on this drawing. So a lot of what you see here came, you know, from them, from our discussions with them.
Okay.
Yes. We actually went down and looked at their dog park and their pickleball courts to get, you know, an idea of what, what we're in for.
So I have a question then, I guess, for Mr. Box. This is a site plan for the Pritchard Park. We've talked about flipping and that may be doable. At this point, would you recommend or is there opportunity for us to table until such time that a new layout could be presented? That would look at a possible different, different arrangement of the activities and give us something more concrete to approve?
I think that's within your purview. If you so choose to table it, yes, that's within your purview to do that.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have right now. Oh, thank you, Mr. Benly. Are we good? Do we have a motion? Okay, Mr. Oliver?
I do got a question on that. Let's say it gets approved tonight, the way it sits and the people get to get at a planner, engineer gets together and says, we could flip this. Where would we, where would we be then?
It could be accomplished through a revised site plan or possibly a technical change depending on what all is changed with the flip.
And the reason why I say that, you know, we've been kinda, there's been people really waiting for this and it just sounds like we're kicking the can down the road by tabling it, but they bring up good point about this flipping. So I guess what I'm hearing in the process, if this got approved, the process could still go on and we, it still could be feasible, feasibly flipped.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that said, do we have a motion?
Technical change, right?
What's that?
Technical change?
Is it technical change, yeah. Did you want to make the motion, Mr. Provenzano?
Wouldn't have another.
It wouldn't be a new site plan, it would just be a technical change.
It could potentially be a revised site plan or it could be a technical change depending on just how much impact flipping it would have if it starts to alter some of the circulation of vehicles on the property. It can't be accomplished through a tech change. That would be a revised site plan and then it would come back here.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Oliver. We shouldn't wait, but at the same time, we should be looking at whether or not it can be changed or not. Okay, do we have a motion?
Well, again, just to follow up on that though, Mr. Box, if the planning commission does recommend approval of this site plan, they don't have to come up with a technical change and it can be, proceed as planned as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Unless we make that as part of the approval.
Yeah, I don't think you can do that. I think you either need to approve it as is with the understanding that it could be built that way. If the administration later wants to submit a revised site plan, they can do so or they could do it by technical change if it meets the criteria and the ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think this goes back to the discussion we had last meeting. This is a site plan after all, the question is, does the site plan meet the ordinance? And I think it's been indicated that it does. I think it makes sense to give the township staff the comments and maybe they, maybe like a private entity, they may want to come back and change it and certainly it sounds like there's reasonable comments, but as Mr., as Mr. Provenzano eloquently put it last, last meeting, if its site plan meets the ordinance, it's something I think we have to approve and it sounds like it does, so.
Mr. Chairman. And I would add to that though, it is, it is, meets the physical requirements of the zoning ordinance, however, the intent and the wishes and the concerns of the, the surrounding public, I think, were voiced and need to be addressed. We can't just go on the fact that, you know, it meets the intent of the zoning ordinance to put a park here and I think the sound issues, the nuisance issues need to be addressed like any other site plan, though it might, it might meet the letter of the, of some parts of the zoning ordinance, there are those that, that really talk about, you know, the, the public around it too and their concerns. So to eliminate some of those concerns and have a park that's liked by everybody around it as well as the people that go to it, I think need to be addressed.
I would, I would absolutely agree and if I can respond, Mr. Chairman, I would agree that it's good to look at it, I just don't know, I mean, if I have to vote yes or no on this, if, whether I would prefer it a different way, if it meets the ordinance, maybe it, I, yeah, I don't know that I'll go too much further than that other than I think it meets the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So if we approve the site plan tonight, it's not over. I mean, we could look at this and say, yeah, pickleball and, what was the other one? Yeah, the tennis courts and the dog park, dog, you know, thing can be flipped and we do a revised site plan.
But, but let's be clear, if you do approve it, it is over unless the township administration decides in their discretion to come back with a revised site plan, so.
So if you guys all looked at it and it wasn't feasible, we don't have to do anything. We've already approved it, start going. But if you look at it and you meet with the residents and, you know, it can happen, then we just do a revised plan.
We can't force that.
Or a technical change.
Or a technical change.
It wouldn't come back to us, right, if it's a technical change?
No, we would not.
There'd be no guarantee that there would be.
So, and Mr. Van Tiflin said he's willing to work with the residents, look at it, so we have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Spatafora.
Question on the motion though, I think Mr. Van Tiflin made a comment a little while ago that I think through studies or group, you were far along in this process and you gave it a lot of careful thought, can you just, again, just expound on that a little more because if we're at this level where the amenities are located where they are, can you explain just briefly what's been done to get to this point with this particular design?
Yeah, when the township learned that we were, we're gonna be able to acquire the property, we looked at what things have we been working on that could go here relatively quickly, easily and inexpensively. We had looked at developing other park areas and those were 10, $10 million and that, that's a big effort. These are relatively simple things to, to install, they, they fit on the property, they are in high demand, I think, I mean, obviously the pickleball is, even with the dog park, Parks and Rec has been hounded about, so to speak. But, you know, the, we were the ones that came up with the concept and gave that to AW based on input that we have gotten and every other place that we've tried to put, you know, the dog park especially. So we, we tried to isolate it. We've, we've tried to, you know, provide landscaping. I mean, we can, you know, assuming that it's approved tonight, we can go back and look at, is, are there things that we can do with the landscaping, you know, could we do, put some sort of screening wall along that property line? Those types of things we can review internally with the township administration and see if there's, you know, some, some other things, we, obviously we all serve the public, so we want to be a good neighbor, you know, to the surrounding residents. So all that can be reviewed if the planning commission approves it. If, if there's something that would require a revised site plan, then we can bring that back to the planning commission and have another public hearing. If there are simple things that we can do, you know, we can approve them administratively and continue on with the development of the park. Township, you know, really would like to get this park going as, as quickly as possible. That's, we've, we've been hounding AW to get these plans ready to go just because, you know, that was, you know, we got the property, we're excited to get. Just because, you know, that was, you know, we got the property, we're excited to get some of these amenities that we've been promising residents for a long time, so.
Do I have a motion?
Okay, so you're looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
Move this forward or table it, right?
It's up to you, if you're making the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Oliver.
I move that we moved the site plan forward for Pritchford Park, Permanent Parcel 0820426027.
And I'll support that.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Shudo. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Provinzano?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm yes, too.
And Mr. Tuckfield?
It's getting later. I know, Richard, it's okay. I didn't hear. Yes. Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, we're unanimous. Motion passes, site plan passes. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Again, those folks that were concerned about flipping the area, Mr. Van Tiflin is here. So please spend some time with him, talk with him, and share your ideas a little bit more detail.
Just want to let him, just give two minutes.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Twenty-five years, you could've waited a few more, we should've tabled it. A little bit longer to make sure it's right first.
I can't believe you did what you did.
I have a question. After you guys talk about.
Oh, we're, we're, we're done with this item.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, we're finished.
But after you talk about it, and we have more questions, because you're bringing up things that we're not allowed to speak. That's a shame. You ought to give that some consideration. After you've discussed between yourselves and this gentleman here, and this planning manager here, and then all this stuff is coming up, and we can't speak anymore. I was born in the United States.
Thank you.
I'm right beyond the pickleball court. I, I don't want that.
Well, thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and continue. And we're going to start with old business. And Plan Unit Development, General Design Plan for Maddox. Permanent Parcels is 0836353, 033, 0836353, 023, 0836353, 030, 0836353, 018. Seems like I've said these numbers like every single week for the last three or four weeks. Located on the north side of Hall Road, east of North Avenue, Section 36, Carl Zimmerman, petitioner.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think you're going to have to say them again. If you saw your email earlier, the petitioner has requested that this be tabled. I, I know myself and Mr. Aloya and others have been continuing to work closely with them. But they have requested at this time to be tabled to the August 17th Planning Commission meeting.
Is that enough time for them? You know, could, could.
Yeah, we're, we're dealing with.
Would it be better to just give them a month to work on this, or?
No, I think the next meeting is what they're requesting. We're down to a handful of important issues that we're hoping that we can have resolved within the next week.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we need a motion to table, correct, sir? Mr. Box?
Correct.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provinzano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
All right. Number eight, public comments on non-agenda items. There is no one here, so.
Wait, 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 wait a second. We got our.
Oh, we have, that's right, we do have a citizen in the audience. Sir, did you have anything you'd like to share?
Oh, I, I think everyone's uncovered it tonight.
Okay. Commissioners' comments.
I just have one comment. Charlie, remember, we had our first joint meeting and this topic was brought up, pickleball, dog parks and things like that. It's been probably six or seven years that we started this. When we started this, I had three dogs, now I have one. I did play pickleball a lot and my brothers in Shelby, and, and we're going to start playing once these outdoor courts are put in. And I think the residents will be thankful for this, because this is a thing that's been coming for years and years. And finally seeing it materialize, I think is a great thing for the township, the dog park and the pickleball courts. Those are my thoughts.
Sure.
And thank you for the time.
Anyone else?
Up on it, it's going to be positive for this community. Once that road gets finished up, it'll alleviate all them issues and, and.
Can I ask? We'll move forward. What's a real number in this area that would actually go to the 22 and Romeo Plank area and go to this park? Just think of the number of people that would do that. I, I realize that there's some people that object it, but it was like 20 or 30 people. I mean, there's a bunch of people that want to go there.
Right. Apparently, there's going to be tournaments, I guess.
Guys, commissioners, we're not going to please everybody.
No?
That's correct.
Yes.
I have a question for our sole member in the pod. Frank, where are we at, if you know, with, you know, the road widening there for Romeo Plank, as far as with the road commission?
Like Jim stated earlier, we were presented with a cost sharing agreement and some cost estimates. We had, really, we're going to move forward with the last board meeting and, to get that approved. But the numbers came in shockingly high. So we're taking a moment to look at it and talk to the road commission a little more. And if we were to sign this particular cost sharing agreement, it changes our budget for next year by a, by a pretty big number. So we're going to have to decide financially how to accommodate that cost sharing agreement. And that's just for the right-of-way acquisition and the design phase. We haven't seen any construction numbers yet. Just like every project that we have in the works right now, all the numbers are coming in high. And it's a concern, because everything that we're planning to do, we're going to start to have to push more projects down the road until costs come in line with our avail, ability to, to pay those bills. So that's where we're at with that.
Right.
So since I'm up here, you know, the, the project that came through tonight is the best possible project for the township as a whole. I recognize that in every project that we've put forward as a community, probably since this place was built, you know, and somebody on your board bought the property. Somebody was going to be upset about it. And we're, we're sensitive to that. I was speaking to Mr. Van Tiflin during some of the questions. We have the opportunity to fill that entire area behind the pickleball courts and the property line with thick evergreen trees. There's nothing already slated for that area. I'm happy to make sure that happens, so that we can put as much of a barrier between the residents living there and what they perceive as a noisy pickleball court. I've also learned that in going to visit a lot of parks, a lot of pickleball courts and a lot of dog car, dog parks, and I've been to all over Oakland County and McComb County, seeing what other municipalities offer. None of them are the nuisance that people perceive them to be when they're just coming. Typically, they increase property values. Everybody likes to promote the fact that they live near a park when they're trying to sell their property. I think it's ultimately going to prove and, to be proven to be a great addition to the, not only to the township as a whole, but to those of us that are going to live near it. And I'm one of those people, by the way. I live, I'm going to live right next to it.
All right. Any, any other comments, commissioners? I just have a quick one. My granddaughter, Ally, is two. And I took her to Station Two to see a fire truck up close. And I believe it's Sergeant Zepke, I think he's a sergeant, and a paid-on-call firefighter. And I did it on the spur of the moment, I didn't call, I just showed up. And they just gave her the grand tour and she got a little fire hat and a badge and she was just all thrilled. And, you know, if Sergeant Zepke, and I wish I could remember the, the paid-on-call firefighter's name, but, you know, if they're representatives of our township, then we're doing a really good job. So that's all I have. McComb Township Board of Trustee, liaison, update. Mr. Oliver?
Okay, couple of things. The Smart Bus that we contract through Richmond Lennox, they were here, gave us a little proposal. And they're, they're trying to do bigger and better things for us. We need to, to get it out to our residents. We're going to do that through the parking rec paper. That there's quite a few things that they offered that they feel that they're not, that the residents don't realize are there. So that was, that was kind of a pretty good presentation. And then the other thing that I, I took light to is that we had an assessor, that was an assessor level two. And this assessor spent a lot of time and got his level three. And he was reclassified and got an upgrade. But it kind of shows a couple of things when that happens. It shows that the environment in this community for employees are to the fact that this employee says, he could easily get his level three and went somewhere else, but he decided to stay here. So it kind of shows the atmosphere of what's going on in McComb Township, so that, that's it.
All right, thank you. Z B A liaison, update?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we do have a meeting Thursday. I don't know if there's any updates for the meeting Thursday. I know we have a long agenda item, but I don't know if there's anything.
Not yet, no.
Okay, all right, very good. So I just say, we've, we've got a long agenda for Thursday. And one thing, real briefly, I want to mention. Individual was here as we were leaving, she was concerned that I might have been laughing at her. I just want to make sure I make the comments I was chuckling with Mr. Bentley over the end of our vote. Certainly don't want to express not a great, not a great movement toward the residents. So just want to make, make that point, and that's all the comments I have.
All right. Planning Department items?
I do have one item to share. We have a number of properties, kind of remnant properties, currently zoned R1S within the township. R1S zone does not match anything on the current master plan, nor will it match anything on the master plan we're working on. So we are going to be doing some rezoning of those properties initiated by the township in several phases, because there are quite a few. They tend to be grouped together, so I think we're doing four or five.
Phases?
Six, six phases of that. So we're going to be sending a letter above and beyond what's required for the, the 300-foot mailers to all the landowners upfront, explaining what we're doing, why we're doing it.